Clerk. Clerk. She's not here. Clerk, it's one o'clock. Good afternoon. Let me go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Citrus County Board of County Commissioners this eighteenth day of November 2025, and this meeting is officially called to order. I am going to ask to come forward Citrus County resident Zeb Bishop from Eden Baptist Church to give us our invocation, and then I am going to ask one of my deputy clerks, retired Sergeant Paul S. Mialco of the United States Air Force, to lead us in the pledge. If you all will please stand.
Who will bow with me? Let's pray. Lord God, thank you for today. God, I thank you for those men and women that choose to serve, spend their life in service of others, and God, I just pray that you would grant this commission wisdom. God, give them guidance as to what would be the way to go. God, I pray that they would look to you for leadership, and God, I just thank you for them and their willingness to serve our community. So, God, I just pray over this, this meeting, pray over this county, God be with us, lead us, guide us, and direct us, and ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both, Zeb and Paul. I'm going to go ahead and conduct the roll call. We have Jeff Kennard, Commissioner for District One, Diana Finnegan, Commissioner for District Two, Janet Barrick, Commissioner for District Three, Rebecca Bays, Commissioner, District Four, Holly Lee Davis, Commissioner, District Five, County Administrator Steve Howard, County Attorney Denise A. Diamond Lynn, and then myself, Clerk of the Court Tracy Perry. Members of the board, I would like to call for nominations for Chair of the Board of County Commissioner.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
I would like to nominate Diana Finnegan as Chair.
Second.
And motion to close nominations?
You made a motion or you want me to?
No, I would add it to it.
Okay, and, and motion to close.
Do we have to second that? Second. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no opposition, so motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Finnegan. All right. No, you'll be fine. It'll, it'll work itself out in a minute.
All snuggling down there.
Board, thank you for your vote. I, it's an honor to accept being Board Chair for this year. I look forward to working with each of you and with staff and our community to ensure efficient meetings and transparent decision-making. I hope to be a leader that can lead this board to consensus, and at times or issues when that cannot happen, I hope to be the leader that can encourage a productive discussion and mutual respect of one another. I don't take the position lightly. I know what that means in the community. You're trusting me at times to collectively speak for this board, and I intend to and hopefully make you proud to do that. So, thank you for putting your trust in me. First order of business, I would like to thank Commissioner Rebecca Bays for her leadership over the last year, and if this board would like to help me publicly thank her, meet me in the front here, and we have a plaque to give to you.
Are you going to do your other officers first?
No.
All right, this is the way they wanted it.
Presented to Rebecca Bays for your dedicated service to the citizens of Citrus County as Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners, District Four, from November 19th, 2024 to November 18th, 2025.
Board, I'm looking for a nomination for first Vice Chair.
Madam Clerk, I would make a motion that we appoint Commissioner Barrick as first Vice Chair and make a motion as, or add to my motion that we close nominations.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Kennard and a second by Commissioner Bays. Any further board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Does she move?
Do you want me to move now or?
Yes.
Okay. She can't wait to get up that clock.
Taking your snacks, too.
Taking my snacks.
She's got a fistful of them. Congratulations, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, Board, I'm looking for a nomination for second Vice Chair.
Madam Chair. I would like to nominate Commissioner Kennard and close nominations.
Nice second, eh?
Okay, we've got the mover being Rebecca Bays and second by Commissioner Barrick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Commissioner Kennard.
Yes, thank you, ladies.
Wow, this is epic. If you all don't know, Commissioner Kennard's been warming that seat for a while.
I got a hell of a hand down there.
Mr. Howard, do you have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
I do. I have some additional time-sensitive items, E1G RFQ 25-096 Continuing Services Contract, Clymar Farmer Barley Surveying LLC, Coastal Engineering Associates, Inc., and Stan Tech Consulting Services, Inc., E1H PB 26-048 Conservation Planning Study North Florida Land Trust, E10 SCOP Agreement for Milling and Resurfacing South Apopka Avenue from East Anna Joe Drive to US 41, and finally, a correction on Q2 Code Review and Appeals Board Announcement. Announced vacancy only, no vote required. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to approve the agenda with the changes noted.
Second.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Barrick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're going to move into bank signature cards. Motion to approve.
Yep, Madam Chair, motion to approve A6.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Kennard. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we take public comment for this, Madam Chair?
No, ma'am.
Motion carries. I'm going to ask just for a short recess, and we're going to take care of that right now with the clerk. Yep.
I wanted this seat back.
And we're back. It is time for proclamations, awards, and presentations.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Davis.
Motion to approve B1 and B2.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Barrick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's go down front.
With those representing National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, please make your way forward. Whereas on January 27, 2025, members of MidFlorida Homeless Coalition's in Care identified 180 households with a total of 244 people who are literally homeless, and whereas the Citrus County Public School System reported for school year 2024 to 2025, 244 students experienced homelessness based on the Department of Education's homeless definition, and whereas the purpose of the proclamation is to educate the public about the many reasons people are hungry and homeless, including the shortage of affordable and sustainable housing in Citrus County for very low-income residents to the, to the asset-limited income-constrained employee Alice population, and to the, and to encourage support for homeless assistance service providers, food pantries, as well as community opportunities for students and ser, and school service organizations, and whereas there are many organizations committed to housing, sheltering, providing support, supportive services, as well as meals and food supplies to the homeless and hungry, hungry, including MidFlorida Homeless Coalition, Basic United, CASA, Citrus County Cold Weather Shelter, Citrus County Schools, Citrus Lending, Community Food Bank, Daystar Life Center, the Lula McGrady Foundation, National Nature Coast Ministries, Stephen Teaster II Esquire, Society of St. Vincent de Paul Cares, Yaya's Youth Adult Shelter of Citrus, Zero Hour Life Center, and many more, and whereas the Board of County Commissioners recognize the hunger and homelessness, continue, and homelessness continue to be a serious problem for many individuals and families in Citrus County, now therefore be resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County, Florida, proclaims the week of November 16 through the 20th, 2025 in Citrus County, Florida, as National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, executed this 18th day of November, 2025.
Of course I will, given the opportunity. So, I have two just real quick notes. As of October 31st this year, Citrus County had 672 unsheltered individuals on our streets. That's up from 288 a year ago at this time. It's a dramatic increase. I ask that the community remember that 48 of those families have an income monthly over $1,500 a month, and they still can't make it. That's the asset, the Alice population we were talking about. The second thing I want to make a point of is this is Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, and the week before Thanksgiving is a time for the community to reach deep because our food banks are hurting and our population is hungry, and so any help that they can offer is, I know tremendously grateful, gratefully appreciated. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Poole/Ralph with the Citrus County Cold Weather Shelter, and I just wanted to let everyone know that we were actually able to open this past week, and we were able to serve 73 unduplicated individuals is how many that we had come through our shelter doors while we had this last cold front. A lot of magic happens. We'll be having an informational session coming up at the LaCanto Government Building, and I also'd like to say to Mr. Howard, thank you for your article that highlighted the Citrus County Cold Weather Shelter. Thank you very much.
With those representing Keep Citrus County Beautiful Pride Award, please make your way forward. Whereas Keep Citrus County Beautiful, an affiliate of Keep America Beautiful and Keep Florida Beautiful, was incorporated as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization in 2001 to encourage personal responsibility and community stewardship for litter abatement, recycling awareness, and community beautification, and whereas Keep Citrus County Beautiful created the Pride Award to recognize those individuals and organizations volunteering their personal time and efforts to preserving our county's natural beauty and environmental health by reducing litter, promoting recycling, and beautifying our community, and, and whereas the Board of County Commissioners is pleased to join in the recognition of Keep Citrus County Beautiful Pride Award recipients for voluntarily investing their personal time and diligent efforts to beautify citrus. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County joins Keep Citrus County Beautiful in commending and thanking Sharon Autry for creating the Inverness Middle School Resilient Roots Campus Beautification and Student Leadership Initiative to instill civic responsibility, community pride, and environmental stewardship to preserve Citrus County for future generations as a place where people and nature live in harmony, executed this 18th day of November, 2025.
So, again, I just, we're grateful on behalf of Keep Citrus County Beautiful for this continued partnership that we have with the county and that provides us this platform to publicly acknowledge individuals and organizations that are out there in our, in our county, keeping our county beautiful. Ms. Autry approached me several months ago, past, last year perhaps, that she had this wonderful idea of getting the, the students involved at, in the Inverness Middle School, and would we be able to support her in this effort, and we said, sure, we figure out how we're going to get the money, and, and we made it happen, and, and so we are just, again, grateful for the partnership, but also very proud of Ms. Autry and what you're doing with the students and, in the environment and making those marks, anti-littering and keeping our county beautiful checkmarks. So, thank you again.
Okay, we're moving into time certens, and we have a 105 for Clerk Tracy Perry. Thank you for being here and getting us all reorganized today.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners, County staff. Each year, we review our investment policy in conjunction with our investment management firm, PFM, so this year, just bringing forward to you a couple proposals for changes to our investment policy. If you want to go to the next slide, Reese. Before I get into that, I know that you're getting quarterly performance reports now on the board consent agenda, but I just want to give you an overview of fiscal year 2025 since we just concluded that. In the past, we've done these on an annual calendar year basis, but trying to go forward, we are going to do them on a fiscal year because that, we conclude everything and close our books at the end of the year. So, the total recorded investment for fiscal year 2025 was $14,363,031, and of that, the realized gains for fiscal year 2025 were $14,021,002. So, as you can see, it's down just slightly from 2024, but a lot of that is just the market trends that are going on. Our realized gains, just more for education of the public, our profits that we earn from selling an asset or as an asset matures, these then become realized gains and opposed to our unrealized gains, which are the potential profits that we would have as long as we hold that asset to maturity. As far as the policy changes that we are recommending, these are just four simple changes to the investment policy for the county that are going to help with our diversification and flexibility in the market conditions. We were asking to increase the maturity from five to five point five years for treasuries, federal agencies, agencies, MBS, ABS, municipal bonds, and corporate notes, and then just to increase the allocation for three different types of investment avenues. Again, this is just to allow us to continue to further diversify, and then for the market conditions, we can be flexible in that. Just so that you have a comfort level, as I've stated in the past, the county's investment policy does contain everything in it, all the required sections to meet Florida Statute 218.415, all the required sections to be certified as an association of public treasures of the US and Canada, and also the Government Finance Officers Association's recommended best practices. So, with that, I will ask any questions, and if there are none, then I would just ask that you please approve and adopt the new investment policy.
Board, any questions for the Clerk?
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Bays, second by Commissioner Davis. Any public comment? Any further board comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next up, we have a presentation by Ms. Claudia Delgado with the Citrus County Pavement Management. Ms. Delgado is with Mott McDonald. And our very own Carlton Hall.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, congratulations, Chair. So, I just wanted to start this off by thanking Mott McDonald for all their time, for speeding this process up, even though it seems like it took a long time, they really did come through in a pinch for us and got this completed right away. So, I'm just going to let them present to you, and that way you can see what information they were able to glean.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and congratulations as well on, on the reorganization and recent changes. I wanted to thank you very much for the opportunity to come and present to you on the milestone of this project that we've reached at this point. As you know, we started about a year back. We've, we've come before you several times to kind of keep you informed of what's been going on, and we are now at a position that I think is a very actually positive one, where we are able to say, this is where we are, and be able to now plot in which direction you want to go going forward, so. Want to, how do I move the slides up?
Is that your theme music?
Oh, here we go. Here we go. Okay. So, just quick, quick overview, we started back in January with the pavement condition survey, the bands that did the automated survey and drove throughout the county. After that, we threw a series of meetings that we held with your GIS and public work staff. We gathered all the business processes associated that we needed and the information that we needed to be able to configure the pavement analyst software that is what ultimately we, we use to do the analysis of your network. So, that, that configuration was what was happening over the course of late spring and early summer, and that configuration included the decision trees that we came before you in May of this year and presented for consensus, as well as all the treatments and the improvement rules of those treatments, along with the performance model, which is just basically how your pavement ages over time. So, that configuration was done. We did the testing.
This is Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week. And the week before Thanksgiving is a time for the community to reach deep because our food banks are hurting and our population is hungry. And so any help that they can offer is, I know tremendously grateful, gratefully appreciated. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Poole slash Ralph with the Citrus County Cold Weather Shelter. And I just wanted to let everyone know that we were actually able to open this past week. And we were able to serve 73 unduplicated individuals is how many that we had come through our shelter doors while we had this last cold front. A lot of magic happens. We'll be having an informational session coming up at the La Canto Government Building. And I also would like to say to Mr. Howard, thank you for your article that highlighted the Citrus County Cold Weather Shelter. Thank you very much.
With those representing Keep Citrus County Beautiful Pride Award, please make your way forward. Whereas Keep Citrus County Beautiful, an affiliate of Keep America Beautiful and Keep Florida Beautiful, was incorporated as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization in 2001 to encourage personal responsibility and community stewardship for litter abatement, recycling awareness, and community beautification. And whereas Keep Citrus County Beautiful created the Pride Award to recognize those individuals and organizations volunteering their personal time and efforts to preserving our county's natural beauty and environmental health by reducing litter, promoting recycling, and beautifying our community. And whereas, the Board of County Commissioners is pleased to join in the recognition of Keep Citrus County Beautiful Pride Award recipients for voluntarily investing their personal time and diligent efforts to beautify citrus. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Citrus County joins Keep Citrus County Beautiful in commending and thanking Sharon Autry for creating the Inverness Middle School Resilient Roots Campus Beautification and Student Leadership Initiative to instill civic responsibility, community pride, and environmental stewardship to preserve Citrus County for future generations as a place where people and nature live in harmony, executed this 18th day of November 2025.
So again, I just, we're grateful on behalf of Keep Citrus County Beautiful for this continued partnership that we have with the county and that provides us this platform to publicly acknowledge individuals and organizations that are out there in our, in our county, keeping our county beautiful. Ms. Autry approached me several months ago, past, last year perhaps, that she had this wonderful idea of getting the, the students involved at, in the Inverness Middle School, and would we be able to support her in this effort? And we said, sure, we figure out how we're going to get the money, and, and we made it happen. And, and so we are just, again, grateful for the partnership, but also very proud of Ms. Autry and what you're doing with the students and, in the environment and making those marks, anti-littering and keeping our county beautiful checkmarks. So thank you again.
Okay, we're moving into time certens, and we have a 105 for Clerk Tracy Perry. Thank you for being here and getting us all reorganized today.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners, county staff. Each year, we review our investment policy in conjunction with our investment management firm, PFM. So this year, just bringing forward to you a couple proposals for changes to our investment policy. If you want to go to the next slide, Reese. Before I get into that, I know that you're getting quarterly performance reports now on the board consent agenda, but I just want to give you an overview of fiscal year 2025 since we just concluded that. In the past, we've done these on an annual calendar year basis, but trying to go forward, we are going to do them on a fiscal year because that, we conclude everything and close our books at the end of the year. So the total recorded investment for fiscal year 2025 was $14,363,031. And of that, the realized gains for fiscal year 2025 were $14,021,002. So as you can see, it's down just slightly from 2024, but a lot of that is just the market trends that are going on. Our realized gains, just more for education of the public, our profits that we earn from selling an asset or as an asset matures, these then become realized gains and opposed to our unrealized gains, which are the potential profits that we would have as long as we hold that asset to maturity. As far as the policy changes that we are recommending, these are just four simple changes to the investment policy for the county that are going to help with our diversification and flexibility in the market conditions. We were asking to increase the maturity from five to 5.5 years for treasuries, federal agencies, agencies, MBS, ABS, municipal bonds, and corporate notes. And then just to increase the allocation for three different types of investment avenues. Again, this is just to allow us to continue to further diversify. And then for the market conditions, we can be flexible in that. Just so that you have a comfort level, as I've stated in the past, the county's investment policy does contain everything in it, all the required sections to meet Florida Statute 218.415, all the required sections to be certified as an association of public treasures of the US and Canada, and also the Government Finance Officers Association's recommended best practices. So with that, I will ask any questions? And if there are none, then I would just ask that you please approve and adopt the new investment policy.
Board, any questions for the clerk?
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Bayes, second by Commissioner Davis. Any public comment? Any further board comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next up, we have a presentation by Ms. Claudia Delgado with the Citrus County Pavement Management. Ms. Delgado is with Mott McDonald. And our very own Carlton Hall.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Congratulations, Chair. So just wanted to start this off by thanking Mott McDonald for all their time for speeding this process up, even though it seems like it took a long time. They really did come through in a pinch for us and got this completed right away. So I'm just going to let them present to you, and that way you can see what information they were able to glean.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and congratulations as well on, on the reorganization and recent changes. I want to thank you very much for the opportunity to come and present to you on the milestone of this project that we've reached at this point. As you know, we started about a year back. We've, we've come before you several times to kind of keep you informed of what's been going on. And we are now at a position that I think is a very actually positive one, where we are able to say, this is where we are, and be able to now plot in which direction you want to go going forward. How do I move the slides up?
Is that your theme music?
Oh, here we go. Okay. So just quick, quick overview. We started back in January with the pavement condition survey, the bands that did the automated survey and drove throughout the county. After that, we threw a series of meetings that we held with your GIS and public works staff. We gathered all the business processes associated that we needed and the information that we needed to be able to configure the pavement analyst software that is what ultimately we, we use to do the analysis of your network. So that, that configuration was what was happening over the course of late spring and early summer. And that configuration included the decision trees that we came before you in May of this year and presented for consensus, as well as all the treatments and the improvement rules of those treatments, along with the performance model, which is just basically how your pavement ages over time. So that configuration was done. We did the testing and calibration over the course of late, early fall, and have been able to conduct several analyses, which is the information that I'm going to be presenting to you now on the current condition of your network. Before I actually dive into the numbers, I think it's important that we have a common framework and a common language, and make sure that we all begin to get familiarized with some of these terms that you're going to be hearing staff use more and more. And so I just want to, and I hope you bear with me a little bit while I'll go through a couple of definitions, just to make sure that we're all on the same page. So you may have heard of key performance indicators and probably have them in other realms of activities of the county. Pavement management is no exception, right? We use different indicators that demonstrate or show how efficient an agency is in the program. And those indicators can be quantitative, or they can be qualitative, right? So they can be something that's a number that's measured, or a condition that is described. In case, in the case of pavement management, there are some common ones. We're going to be presenting to you today on the pavement condition of the network. And we're going to be talking also about backlog. I'll be, I'll be going a little bit more into detail about what that is. And percent miles above or below thresholds. These are some of the most common ones that you see. I've also listed there others that are, that are used very commonly in, in the industry. The KPIs that ultimately you, you decide as an agency to adopt will be linked to the goals that you want to achieve as an agency and the needs that you have. But at, at this beginning stage where we are, these two, these three indicators that we're going to be presenting on today are, are a good indicator just to tell us where we are right now. Tied to these KPIs is what in the system is called the pavement condition states. So you are familiar with the concept of payment condition index, or the PCI. Well, in the system, together with staff, we have described ranges of PCIs for different qualitative descriptions, from very good down to very poor. And so you can see on the illustrate, on the slide, the PCI range that corresponds to each one of those qualitative descriptions. There's also a very vague description of kind of what goes into it. I think we pretty much all know what a really good pavement looks like, and we all know what a really bad pavement looks like. Sometimes it gets a little, a little difficult, they're in the middle, right, to how, how do we describe those and what goes into this? Well, this, these condition states are meant to help us sort of, especially when we're communicating with the public, help us transmit that information. So I'm going to be in the graphs that go, that I'll be showing you briefly. You're going to see they're kind of color-coded along the lines of these condition states. So when we, when we conducted the analysis of your network, the current network average, right, that's the average condition over all the roads of your network, is at a 55.37. In the condition state definitions that were, that were set by working with your staff, that is categorized as poor condition, right? When we look at it a little closer, and you can see the breakdown of the miles that you have of your network and the different condition states, but just above half of your condition of your network miles are below satisfactory level, which means they're below a 60 in This map is just to illustrate, color-coded by, again, by those condition states, where, you know, the general condition you can see of, of your network, each, each segment of the roadway is, is color-coded based on those condition state. Now, the next KPI that I'm going to talk to you about, we're still going to be talking about the, the PCI, but we're also going to dive a little bit more into the functional classification, right? So you can slice and dice that information in many different ways. What I wanted to just bring forward the definitions of what your functional classification is, and in your case, it's defined actually, and defined in your land development code. But your roads have certain functions, and those functions actually can change over time, depending on development, depending on traffic patterns. But you have basically principles and arterials, which collect traffic from other minor collectors and from local residential areas or local communities, local commerce areas, and collect all this traffic and move them to different hubs in your, in your, in your county. So these are, are the, you have the, the functional classifications that are in your land development code and by Florida statute as well. You have principles, minor arterials, major and minor collectors, and local roads. Okay? These are, again, just definitions of those that are from your land development code. When we look at your network by functional classification, currently about 51% of your roads are classified as local roads. And the other 49 then are dispersed among the minor arterials, major collectors, minor collectors, and there's a small percentage that are classified as alleys as well. Now, if we look at the condition based on functional classification, approximately 53% of your local roads and alleys currently fall below satisfactory condition. And again, that is a PCI less than 60. And you can see the, the distribution of the other classifications as well. And this, this pie chart here is only looking at your local roads. This is the breakdown of your local roads. Now, if we look at your collectors and arterials, approximately 39% of your collectors and arterials are currently below a satisfactory condition. This is a breakdown by commissioner district, again, following the condition states. Any, any questions on that? I'm happy to, to dive a little bit more in, into a little more information, but just to present you the different miles per each commissioner district that fall into the different commissioner states. All right. Now, when we talk about backlog, that's the other big KPI that we looked at in the analysis for you guys. When we talk about backlog, it is that the miles on all the repairs and maintenance repairs that you have to do, or you need to do, that you haven't been able to fund yet, right? You haven't been able to get to it yet. And as time goes by, that backlog tends to increase, particularly if your funding level can't keep pace with, with what's happening in, in your network. So why is it, why is it important to look at backlog? Well, because the worst condition that your, that your roads tend to get into, your repairs become more costlier. If your repairs become more costlier, then at the same time, that means that your money is, is getting stretched thinner when you go to do repair work. And so your backlog tends to increase. Those are, those are some of the situations that we see. How can we manage backlog? Well, first big step you've already taken, which is the payment management system, right? Now we're actually able to put our eyes on what the actual backlog is, and we can conduct analysis to see how we can manage that backlog best. But also, payment preservation strategies go a long way to helping stretch that dollar amount and helping keep roads that, from falling into that poor category. We know we have to address the ones that are in poor, in poor condition as well, but we, at the same time, we also want to do the best that we can to keep other roads from falling into that, into that category as well, because conversely, that increases our So when we looked at your, at your backlog, we, we see here it's divided by the different treatment groups that the software would suggest. So collectively, you have a little bit over $700 million in backlog. As you see, most of it is in the reconstruction category, and that tracks with the condition that we saw the network being roughly above 50% in poor, in below satisfactory condition. Now, we conducted several optimization analyses in the software, basically to get a, an idea in terms of different funding levels of what happens with your, with your soft, with your network at different funding levels, including your current funding level and what would it take to maintain, for example, your current network average? What would it take to improve it? What happens if you go below your current budget? So we did an analysis of several of these funding schemes for you. All of the analysis were performed in today's dollars. I do want to reiterate that and make, that's very important. No inflationatory parameters were put in place. We have the capability of doing so in the software. But do keep in mind, that's why these analyses are done every year, because your treatment costs, anything associated with asphalt, the price can be very volatile and can change. So your unit, unit prices can change over time, you know, your budgets can change over time. So for the purposes of this analysis, we're just looking at today's money throughout the course of the analyses. You're going to hear me talk a lot about what is constrained scenario and unconstrained scenario. Unconstrained scenario is when we tell the software, this is how much money I have, go and tell me, based on all the, the decision trees that were programmed and all the rules that we put in place after discussions with your staff, go and tell me what's the best way to spend that money to maximize the benefit to the network and keep the, the network in the best possible condition. When we say constrained analysis, then we put some kind of condition onto the analysis. And that can be even the budget itself. That could be, maybe in this year I have $10 million, but next year I only have $5. Or it could be, tell me what I need to do to improve X% of the network. So we're putting some kind of condition on the software, and that's what we call the constrained scenario. All of the scenarios were performed over a course of 10 years. And so when we look at your current funding level, it's the blue solid line that you see. I added for reference what I call the unfunded scenario. So if you did nothing to the, to your pavement network over the course of the next 10 years, that is the red dashed line that you see. In both cases, you see that the network condition is, is, is worsening over time. So you have a negative slope, right? The condition is going downwards. That's because even at $16 million, which is your current budget, you're underfunded for the needs that you have in your network. But you can certainly see that is better than doing nothing, which is the, the reference line of the underfunded, the unfunded scenario. So then, obviously, that begs the question of how, you know, what do we do to change that trend? And so we looked again at your current budget, the 16.2 million, roughly $30 million over the course of the next 10 years. And again, remember, this is today's dollar. But roughly $10, $30 million would roughly maintain the current level that you have, the current condition of your network. And that would be, I always say it's, you know, it's a 10-year analysis, but this is why we do this analysis every year. That would be like if nothing else changed over time, if you didn't have more miles added to your network, you know, if unit prices didn't escalate, that kind of thing. That's why every year we revisit the scenarios. If we look at the $45 million, which is the light blue, then around year eight, this is actually the first scenario, that we see that around year eight, we get out of the poor category for your network and start to get into the satisfactory category. And then 65 million definitely gets you into satisfactory and towards the end of the 10-year period into good condition. So these are offered just to give the board an idea of, you know, the, the performance of your network is tied, obviously, to funding, and the, the, the backlog of your network is also, at the same time, it's tied, they're, they're relational, right? But this is offered to you as, as an instrument or a tool for you to be able to visualize just kind of where you are today. And then obviously, the, you know, make decisions of what you want your network to light, to look like in the, you know, going forward, what kind of level of service you want to offer or strive for. These are analyses that we can perform if there are certain goals in the future that the board would wish to set, which some agencies do. These are analyses that, all, all of these that we can perform for you. Once, I, I believe once we then have direction from you in terms of, of funding, then we'll work with your public works staff to actually create and formalize the, the work plan going forward. But we did want to bring these results to you and then get your feedback of any questions that you have.
Thank you, Ms. Delgado. We have a question from Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Thank you. Excellent presentation as always. Point of clarification, this is the average network PCI?
That is correct.
Okay, so that, I assume that means there's still some in very poor and poor, even with the 65 million in 10 years?
There, yes, there could be. We could, we could provide you the information, like broken down by functional class or commit, you know, district, commissioner district, to see more, in a more detailed level, if there are some that fall below, you know, one of the categories.
Yeah, satisfactory would be obviously the, you know, satisfactory above would be brilliant, of course. And then on a much earlier slide, or not that much earlier, about three or four slides back, the preservation for 20 and a half million, rehabilitation for almost 147 million, reconstruction for almost 547 million, the three yellow columns. So I think.
Oh, the, the backlog one. This one?
Yeah, that one.
Yes.
So when reconstruction and rehabilitation, when those are all caught up, and we, if we were in Nirvana land, where everything is working and we are going to be as absolutely efficient as humanly possible, because all we're doing is preservation, basically, reapplying asphalt when we need to, things like that. And I know about the coatings that staff told me about for residential roads.
Yeah.
So when everything is in the preservation category, what is that annual budget?
The annual budget of some of the analyses that we've seen so far are pointing somewhere south, actually, north of 95 million to catch up on your backlog. Now, that doesn't mean that.
I mean, after we're caught up.
Right.
If we're into just preservation, because it can't be 20 million in today's terms, because those two other columns, all that mileage has to shift into.
Right.
Preservation.
We would need to do an analysis to see, like, once, let's say we, we were able to ideally address backlog, what, then would it would maintain, what would be necessary to maintain? The other thing there is, a lot of agencies will kind of first work to control their backlog, maybe not necessarily eliminate it, but control or say, this is an acceptable level of backlog for me. And once they get there, then they set goals of their network, which could be something like, we don't want, we don't want any roads below a 60, or we don't want, some agencies will, will divide and say, our, our arterials and collectors, we don't want below a 70, but our, and our residential roads or our local roads, we're okay with them up to a 60. So that, once you get to kind of stabilize, then you can start to set goals and we can perform those analyses.
Yeah, because, I mean, it, it makes, I always said the most fiscal conservative way through is to always maintain the assets you own. However, there's two times when it's okay, it's fiscally prudent to put it off. One is if you got, you know, fired from your job, I'm talking about on a personal basis, which similar to us is when, for example, Duke's, our revenues from Duke just went away, like, you know, a large portion. So we can't afford it, you know, the taxpayers can't afford it. And the other one is after COVID, when all the prices spiked, that's a really good time to delay.
Yes, yes.
You know, and hope that they come back down. So, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Commissioner Barrick.
When I look at these lovely pages and all this stuff, 20 million to preserve. We don't even have 20 million this year for roads. And then when I go to the page that has optimizing, you're using 16 million for the green line, 30 million for the next line, 45 million, and 65, yeah, the one you have up there. Our budgets have been 6 million, 10 million, and 23 million. If we, the 23 is only if we get the referendum and the sales tax. To me, the numbers you've used are really nice numbers, but they're not realistic for our county. And when I look at this and you say 20 million to preserve, and you're not going to do any rehabilitation, no reconstruction with that 20 million, you're just going to go out there and preserve what's done right now. To me, I'm glad you did this study, and I'm glad you got all these wonderful numbers. I look at them and I say, you know, it's, it's not right, okay? When I looked at numbers, I live in Citrus Springs, and I've been in Citrus Springs for 16 years now. And in 16 years, it's amazing, we had four, between 423 miles and 428 miles of roads. When I read your thing, it says I've got 555 miles. We didn't add any roads. The roads in Citrus Springs have only gone down, down, down. So you started adding different types of roads to the scenario, okay? And I, I really like everything you've done, and it really looks nice and sounds nice, but I can't agree with us. but I can't agree with us going with this formula and what you're presenting to us because it is not realistic for the citizens of this county. We are in no way going to get 65 million in our budget for residential road resurfacing. And I try and look at things realistically, okay?
Absolutely.
And like I said, if we don't get the referendum, we're back to 6 million. And 6 million would definitely be way down. That's why we are in the situation we're in right now, because we do not have the funding. And we are hopefully asking the residents to provide us with some additional funding. And that would be for, if they approve it, not till, we wouldn't start getting the money till 2027. So I like what you did. It's a nice thing. It cost us a lot of money as a county. I could have used a million dollars to pave more roads and made a lot more people happy than paying 990,000 to know that our roads are in really poor condition. All I got to do is drive on them. But we do need a plan.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's the thing. This is the plan you came up with. I would like to see what our engineers come up with, that have been doing the roads for all these years, you know, come up with.
Madam Commissioner, I'd like to address a couple of points on what you commented. Number one is, I'm going to go back to the backlog slide. So this slide isn't showing you that we're just going to strictly, or we're not strictly proposing to do 20 million dollars in preservation and nothing else. This is, this slide is showing you what is the need in your network.
That's correct.
And right now, it is recognizing that you need heavy reconstruction in your network, right? The budget scenarios that were done, which are these slides over here, the 16 million is what staff told me is your current budget for this year.
That's right.
The projects that result, right, that line represents a number of projects that are suggested for realization in the next 10 years. The mix of projects that result are not strictly preservation projects. It's a mix of reconstruction, rehabilitation, and preservation projects that are suggested by the software. Again, based on the decision trees that were developed together with your staff. That mix of projects in one year can be heavy on reconstruction, because that's what the system, there are projects that are, or heavy on rehabilitation, because there are projects that are in that bracket, that the software recognizes that they are in danger of falling into reconstruction. And it says, we want to address those now, that is cheaper than letting them fall into that reconstruction category where it's going to be more expensive. It's like your car. You do routine oil and maintenance treatment on your car, knowing that that is saving you down the line from doing a costly transmission change in your vehicle. So the software is doing the same thing. It's saying, this is the money you have, these are the best projects per year, and again, one year might be heavy on reconstruction and/or rehabilitation, one year might be heavy on preservation. It depends, because not all roads start out going into that decision tree at the same point, right? They're all at different conditions. So it depends where each road is now and what are those conditions that we gave it in the software to analyze. The other budget lines that are here were at the suggestion, actually, of staff to provide you an illustration of what is the effort that would be needed in the future. This is very pie-in-the-sky kind of, you know, network. In the future, if the county wanted to strive to get out of the poor category where it is now, it is not to say, like, this is, you know, that this is what you need to do right now. These are now discussions that you need to have and decide what is the best way forward. Ultimately, if, like you said, your budget is 6 million, then we can do the analysis for you based on 6 million and say, with what you have, this is the best mix of projects for you to at least avoid, you know, make that slope less drastic and give you the best mix of projects for the money you have. So the dollar sign for the software is irrelevant. The end result is always going to be the same. It's going to try to give you the best mix of projects to make that dollar that you give it go as far as possible and keep your network in the best possible condition. That is always the goal.
All right, so then, what I would have preferred is different plans. In other words, you say, the preservation is 20 million, the rehabilitation 140, well, I would have liked to see, this is if you do this in year one. Or this is what happens, what do you do in year two? In other words, what happens over the next 10 years? What happens each year? How much is needed each year to continue? But when I see this, it says, you want us to take 20 million, which we really don't have yet, and do all preservation, because that's the most rewarding thing, because if we do preservation, like an oil change, you don't have to keep repairing. But then you got to remember, some people live on the rehabilitation roads, and a lot of people live on the reconstruction roads. And what do we do about that for those citizens, okay? Do we just say, well, five years from now, we'll have enough money because we'll have enough words, enough roads have been preserved, that we can afford to start doing some of the reconstruction? We can't start all of it at once, but we'll start some of it. In the meantime, you know, we've done maybe some of the rehab, because we got the preservation under control. But what do you do to the, what do, what, how do you tell the citizens, it's going to be 10 years of you paying taxes before you're going to actually see anything? I have people by me in my district that have lived on open grade roads for over 15 years that have been waiting for the top layer to be put on, and they're still waiting. Commissioner Finnegan has people in her district the same way. How do you tell people that have been waiting that length of time, well, that's not a preservation, that's a rehab?
Commissioner Barrick, these are not questions, that's not a question for Ms. Delgado, that's a question for the board.
Okay.
And Ms. Delgado, thank you so much.
Well, then, thank you.
You've said that so well. I appreciate what you're saying. And Board, if you don't mind me jumping in, I actually had some questions. This is a great presentation, but I asked for a deeper dive, and I was able to sit with staff and with Ms. Delgado to look into this. So some of the things that you're saying with this page that you're on, with the 20 for preservation, and I think you've well explained that, that's not what this is saying, how to spend the money. And because I saw a reaction from the audience, I have been outspoken about us having so many consultants. I will tell you, this is one that I'm proud that we voted on and that I fully stand behind after I actually got to see it with my eyes. And why? Because I promised all of these people in the audience, all of the taxpayers, that as a board member, I would try to make sure their tax dollars are spent efficiently. Currently, the way we're doing roads in the past is not being efficient. This program shows us that. So they're not saying, oh, look at this, now we need 65 million dollars, here you go, taxpayers pay for it. They're saying, we understand your budget is 16.9 million this year. So we're going to put that in there and make sure the taxpayers aren't taking that 16.9 million dollars and using it as expensively as possible. They're going to try to stretch it. So I actually looked at the 10-year data. Year one, it looks like a lot of preservation, and then it has some rehabilitation, right? It's slowly, and it makes sense to me. So the system's almost saying, stop, you're in danger of spending a lot of money, preserve these roads. These are very important roads for your community, and the taxpayers will have to pay big money for them, but they don't have to if you just stop and preserve them now. As the years go on, it's a little bit, still preserving, less in preservation, more rehabilitation. It makes perfect sense. So every dollar that these taxpayers are spending, even if we're not up to 30 million or 45 million or the 65 million, whatever they can pay for right now, it's going to use every single dollar as efficiently as possible. I think that you said that well. I'm not trying to speak it again, but just trying to communicate it so people really understand this was all about efficiency. If we keep doing the same things, our taxpayers out there are going to still be spending maximum dollars for little result. Now they're going to be spending maximum dollars for their maximum result. So whether we're keeping on that same line or moving up, we are spending their dollars in the best way possible. And I thank you for this presentation and for the additional information, Charles and Claudia, that you showed me the other day, and Walt was there. Thank you all, because it was really eye-opening.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do you have anything?
Nope.
Nothing?
Right. Thank you very much.
Do you have any more? Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. So I guess at this time, what we're going to ask the board is more of a consensus, the 16-plus million dollars that we have to spend this year. We haven't actually committed to any projects yet. We wanted to, as soon as possible, get this information to each one of the commissioners so we could get an idea of how you would like us to spend the money that we have this year. Would you allow us to let this program, that we spent the money on to do the research, tell us where its best use of those funds?
Yes.
I would say it needs to be unconstrained. I mean, outside of the budget that you put in there, I don't think there needs to be any other constraints on it.
Commissioner Davis, when you say yes, is that unconstrained?
Yes.
Commissioner Baz?
Conquer.
Commissioner Barrick?
I think we have to have constraints on it. In other words, we have to know.
After a thorough look and seeing that roads are everywhere and using tax dollars to the best of this program's ability and to your ability, Carlton, I would say unconstrained. So it looks like you have a consensus.
Thank you.
Okay, Board, the next on our agenda is the 110 Public Hearing Annual Notice of Intent to Use the Uniform Method of Collecting Non-Advalorem Assessments Fiscal Year 2026. Now, give me one beat, Carlton, because in looking at this, I've kind of heard we're not quite doing this the right way. We always forget A. So it may be easier if I kick it off asking for a motion, or I can make the motion, to approve H3A, so we can just move on with the public hearing. So I'll make that motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Barrick, seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, looks like we can have our public hearing.
So Commissioners, this is just something we do each and every year to set this public hearing, so we can announce the intent to use the uniform method for collecting non- ad valorem assessments. It's really housekeeping. We bring it to you each and every year, just to be able to, as per the Florida statute 197.3632, collect these taxes.
Thank you. I'll open it to the public. Anybody want to speak on the collection?
Good morning, Commissioner, afternoon Commissioners. My name is Ray Brown. I live in Homosasso. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Two things I want to bring up. First, being, bring up the vote about the Charlie Kirk--
Mr. Brown--
Yeah.
This is a public hearing for just the--
I got you. I'll still take my, I'll take that time for. On those roads, I've got to ask, the people--
Mr. Brown, this is not, we have not hit open to the public. So on the agenda item, if you have one--
What agenda are we on then?
It's H3, this is a public hearing. It's the annual notice of intent to use the uniform method of collecting non-ad valorem assessments.
Okay, I am a--
We will do open to the public shortly.
I'm a little, so what does that, what does that actually mean?
So annually, we have non-ad valorem assessments. Some are communities that ask for these, and we have a way of collecting that. So Mr. Hall brings that to us every year, and we just vote that we can collect that.
And is that available? Is that come from, I guess, the citizens, or how's that collected?
Mr. Hall could probably answer that better.
All right. I apologize.
It's okay.
So most people will notice on their tax bill, there are certain assessments that go, and it kind of, you know, in the description under this hearing, it mentions some of those services for roadway maintenance, facilities, beautification, we have some MSBUs, we have potable water service, different sanitary wastewater, lots of things that are assessments, stormwater as well. And this is just a way of us collecting as a county, these assessments for the, from the taxpayers.
Thank you.
Okay.
Now, does anyone want to speak just on this at this public hearing? Hello, Colonel?
Good afternoon, Mark Sevesky. I live in 3633 North Wagon Point, representing the residents of Pine Ridge. Question for the previous, should there not have been an open to the public for H2? And I'll let you address that one. Specific to this one, I would offer just one comment for consideration. Anytime we start looking at a number of projects, we look at initial acquisition costs and we forget what the life cycle cost of it is to maintain it. And so as you formulate this budget, you're imposing, you're imposing future costs on future commissioners, future staff members, and everything like that. So as you consider these different projects, I highly recommend that you start looking at what the life cycle cost of this is. It won't be a whole lot, you know, a brand-new thing is not going to be a whole lot in the beginning, but those maintenance costs to maintain the infrastructure, for example, the thing we're dealing with, with roads and a number of other things, that will add up over time. So I would recommend somehow come up with a methodology that looks at that and has that consideration put into the budget, not just the initial cost, but what the life cycle cost looks like. And congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mark, I think the clerk needs you.
He's filling one out.
You've got one. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close open to the public. Board, any conversation?
Motion to approve H3B.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Barrick. Any further comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion to table H4A, and I would ask for a courtesy second for sake of discussion.
Are we, are we able to table a public hearing?
Yes.
I'm not going to support it, but I will, but I will second it to hear the discussion.
Thank you.
I don't intend to support it.
I appreciate that. So we have a new offer in the last, since our last meeting, that the Trust for Public Land has funding to do a full-blown market research study in January, when the snowbirds are here, much closer to the actual November date. Also gives us an opportunity to digest the Mott-McDonald study, and it is fully funded. So there's really no reason to not do that. We have, to use your oft-repeated phrase, one bite at this apple. Okay? So sales tax is a very good thing from a business perspective. If you look at it from a business person's perspective, it gives us a 25% discount on anything that this county needs or wants, defined by what the voters say they need or want, right? So that's a really good return on investment, and that's why every other county in the state has had one and almost all currently have one. I don't believe that, I don't believe that we really should take advantage of this, because the way they do this is, it's a, and I'm sorry, I'm a little off today, didn't sleep well last night. The way they do that is a lot like a vision test, and they will start off with exactly what this ordinance is. They will start off with four years just for roads. Yes or no? And then it becomes a vision test. Are you more or less likely to vote for it if it's roads and this? Are you more or less likely to vote for it if it's parks and schools? And then they just go on and on and on down the list of anything that we want them to test. And it's, most of us were very impressed with Mott-McDonald's high degree of, you know, the software usage and the technical aspects of that. This is the same thing. So they may very well kick out the answer that this ordinance will pass. They may, maybe not. And I would say that we can't afford-- say that we can't afford to take that risk, because if we go to November with something that we rammed through, we didn't even listen to what the written recommendation was from the Chamber Steering Committee. If we rammed this through the way it's written now without really checking the temperature of the people that we report to, it has a high, a fairly high, I believe, probability of failure. A lot can happen between now and then. I could be totally wrong. So let me throw out the other option, the other boogeyman. The moment I sat down with staff to get that Mott-McDonald briefing two weeks ago, I was like, oh, wow, we're in trouble. Because right now, we have a gas tax, and we have an ad valorem tax for roads. Residents are already, you know, upset about that, angry about that, confused about that. Why doesn't the gas tax pay for all the roads? Well, it's just a drop in the bucket. So staff told me that the only way out of this is an MSTU. The great news is, is that the MSTU can, we can take the ad valorem off, right? So now we've got an MSTU for all pavement at whatever level that we feel that folks can handle, and a lot of that would go on to big-box stores, not residents. And then the gas tax goes specifically for catching up on our failing bridges and guardrails and things like that. So it becomes a real easy line to say to people, the gas tax pays for guardrails and bridges and stuff like that. That's not pavement management. The MSTU pays for pavement management. And that's it. And that's a really clean way for us to regain the trust of people, because rightfully so, and Commissioner Finnegan, you're all over that, you know? It's, government is Byzantine, man. It is a rabbit hole. You go down there and it's like, and I promise, we're not playing shell games with stuff, but it sure does look like it. There's a reason we pass all these audits. But the cleaner and simpler, it's, it's that effective, what I like to call effective transparency. We are transparent. Everything we do is out there. You can look at everything. But I can guarantee you, it, it takes a lot to try to get through all of that and even understand a fraction of it. Ask me how I know. Being a Commissioner's a vertical learning curve. But effective transparency to say, these are all the bridges and guardrails and stuff that we did, and it adds up to the gas tax, that's super easy. MSTU, and oh, by the way, that MSTU for our residents will be most likely less than what the annual additional maintenance is on a vehicle for driving on poor roads. So if you want to look at a, this board, not this board, okay, but the Citrus County BOCC, stretching about decades, I can point to times when they have been, had really good foresight and set us up for success. But then there's a whole bunch of times that they haven't. And this is a seminal moment. This is a turning point moment in the history of this county to get us back on a footing that we need to be, where we have at least decent roads throughout the network. They don't have to be pristine, but, and to do that most cost-effectively, this is the way forward. So I would simply like to not ram this through right now. It's not due in Tallahassee until March. They would do the survey in January, completely paid for by a nonprofit, not taxpayers. They'll do the survey in January. It'll be voters that are all the different breakdowns of demographics in the, in the community, and then they will kick out the exact language and the likelihood of each of those passing. And then we can devise the, we could either, if this is, this ordinance is the winner, it can go forward in February. We can vote on it then, or maybe we have a different one that we want to vote on, and then it goes to Tallahassee in March. And the closer the, and if anybody's worried about the timeframe, the closer the market research is done to the time of voting is the most, is more accurate. The further away, the less accurate. Make sense? So that, thank you for indulging me, but I, I have spent a lot, several years actually working on this at FAC when I sit in on all these things. And I, I strongly believe that this, just holding off until February vote would be the right thing to do. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barrick?
I understand and hear what you're saying, and I, and I understand what you're saying. But in the, in the past, the surveys that are done don't show us a whole lot. People come to town meetings, people come to this meeting, we get maybe 500 total. That's nothing, okay? Responses to surveys, the people that send out surveys, the response coming back are maybe 20%. So if we were to hold off and not make a decision, we're, we're just wasting and spinning our wheels. Commissioner Kennard is correct. We have got to step up and either make a decision to move forward and ask the people, but explain to the people exactly what we're asking for. And I came up with what I call a definition for a residential road, because I feel that we really need to be exact when we say this, okay? But I don't see agreeing with Commissioner Davis about holding off. If somebody's willing to do it for free, that's nice. But is it going to get the county and the people the roads that are needed and the money that we need if the people vote yes? Thank you.
Madam Chair, could I just point of clarity with this?
Yes, ma'am.
It's telephone interviews. They're not surveys. They're actually tel, very in-depth telephone interviews.
Commissioner Davis, may I ask you a question? Because it's the North Florida Land Trust, so obviously they're looking at land preservation, but you said they're going to start, like, they're looking at, they would do it for roads, though?
This, they've done this, almost all of the ones that they've, so to back up a sec, this is not North Florida Land Trust. This is Trust for Public Land.
Oh, sorry.
They will not work with a county that has not done the green print process. So the moment we got the green print funded, they put us on the funding list for yet another nonprofit that would fund this. So the way they look at it is, well, to back up a second, Peggy Hanrahan is the woman that does the, the telephone interviews, and she hates to lose. She really hates to lose. I mean, I've sat through several of her presentations at FAC. She's either won 34 of 35 or 33 of 34, either sales tax or ad valorem, you know, initiatives on, on ballots. And the way she does that is because she is so good at drilling down into what residents want. And they absolutely do, a lot of times it is land preservation and roads, or land preservation, roads and schools, or whatever that, that magic elixir may be. But they absolutely want to, want it to pass regardless of what it is. So they're not going to play games with the data. They're going to give us what the answers are. Period, full stop. And if the community says, we want 100% for roads, then by gosh, that's, you know, it may be 100% for roads, but they want to see it 10 years. So it could be bonded, or whatever the difference, there may be little tweaks that come out on that, right? But the reason that they do this is that more often than not, we've all heard the outrage from the residents, and what's kind of funny is that some of them have only been here in the last year or two in the state of Florida. Like, now that I'm here, quit the development. Stop, 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 right? Land preservation is really important to Floridians. Aquifer preservation, land preservation, all of those things are incredibly important to Floridians, and specifically for the Nature Coast and Citrus County. So they're, you know, they're just kind of betting that that's probably going to pop out. But it may not. It's truly what we want as a community that will pop out.
Commissioner Davis, I think we're on the losing end of this, but I'll support you because I've been outspoken saying, I think if the people vote for it, it's going to have to be tied with a millage reduction or some savings to offset that. If, you know, if we could stop it now and, and your team finds that, then
And we can still ignore the research and vote this exact thing in in February, and we're still fine. But at least it gives us more data, you know? And, and I
There's a motion and a second on the table. All those, oh, do you want to say something?
Yes. It's a little right, right there.
Well, some people leave those on. So, just so everyone knows, after I get in the swing of things a little bit, this system is supposed to do more, but I think it lies on me to do it. So once I'm in the swing of things, I'm going to sit with Kat, who's in that room, and we're going to see if, if we can't use some more of the functions. If it doesn't work, fine, but I promise to
You'd be a better woman than I if you could figure it out, because it didn't work for me.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna give it the good old college try, so
Mine says Commissioner Barrick on here.
Yeah, mine says Commissioner Finnegan.
So, anyway, I will say, Commissioner Davis, well done. I, as I said to start with, I had no intention of delaying this. I would, let me go back to a statement that I made the last meeting. And I said, I felt, I felt like, and it had been said, that this board could not get a unanimous vote for a pizza party. I would like to see this board come together. If we can't get all five of us together in moving forward with an initiative of this level of importance, then I think it, it's in a lot of trouble when it gets on the ballot. I don't like the idea of pushing this down the road. I think it puts us, again, behind the eight ball in terms of the next phase of this, of groups being able to get out there and sell it. But if we all five, and I would love to hear if all five of us want this to pass, I, I would hope that the answer is yes. And if this is a way for all five of us to get on board with one initiative and let this group do their thing, then I would support it to be, to be with the board, and let's see if we can't, all five get, get together on, on one issue here, and, you know, let the professionals do their thing.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I just want to, I'm sure you all already know this, but I just want to remind you that a motion to table does not allow for public debate. So just bear that in mind as you're discussing this. I'm sure you knew that already.
What do you mean, public debate? Do you mean from the public or from us? From the public. Okay, yes, ma'am, yes. Commissioner Baze, do you have anything?
So there is an agenda item later today. So have you raised the $43,000 for Phase One and Phase Two? That was going to be
Yes, I announced that at, when we did it originally. This is just the paperwork.
But we have the funding for Phase One, Phase Two?
Yes, 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 yes. And this is fully funded through Live Wildly. This, the sales tax one, which is different.
That's all I have.
And Commissioner Kennard, as one person to answer your question, it's not that I'm against it, but someone sent us Pasco counties, which they've re-upped it. And I think the reason that it's so successful is because it was tied to a reduction in property taxes. And that was a big buy-in for the people. And I think that collectively, they feel like they've been taxed to death, especially over the last 10 years. So if we can do something to incrementally lower, lower that, but gain a lot more on a sales tax side, and visitors are paying more of that instead of them, if we could find that balance, that is the only way I feel it would be successful.
There's, I think there, I don't think, I know there are four tenths of a mil that were added into the millage rate specifically for road resurfacing. And I remember saying at that time that, that I think this is the route to go, to add those two tenths of a mil annually until we get to one mil. Because at that time, the price tag was, well, you need roughly one mil to be able to keep up with, with the roads. And that if, if a one-cent sales tax initiative passed, that I absolutely would support, if not champion, pulling back that millage rate that was, that was added to it. So I'm there. You know, if the tourists are going to spend, are going to cover 25, 26% of this if it passes, then absolutely, I would like to see our residents get that 26, 25, 26% back.
I think that would need to be in the ordinance.
Fine. If that, if that can be there, but, right, I guess, you look disgusted. There we go, that's better. All right.
Commissioner Baze?
I just want to caution, if, if you have an organization that's all about conservation, it's how you frame the question that's going, that they're going to ask. And of course, what they want is, they want a piece of the penny to buy land for conservation. So I, I just want that out there for transparency. It's no different than when, you know, the governor is saying, let's eliminate property taxes. And if you went out and you polled everybody today, and they go, heck yeah, let's eliminate property taxes. It's about the question and how it's answered. So don't be surprised when they go out, because we're, we are living in a time when nobody wants any more growth. So you say, would you like to put this land in conservation and take it off, you know, so that we can keep it from development? People are going to go, yes, of course we do. But you just created another problem with the funding that you have, that where we lack now, we're not collecting enough revenue to support the things that we've already built. So it's a double-edged sword. I don't mind supporting it if that's what the board wants to do, but I also just think, to put it out there, to be fully transparent, when you ask the question, you know what the answer is going to be if you ask that question.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barrick?
I, I, maybe I didn't understand when you were explaining. You said they were going to take surveys that would take time, and they would make phone calls. I understood that. And now you're saying that they'll be able to start in January and be done by February, so we can have everything done by March?
Mm-hmm.
And that's an actual timeline, that they will come back to us in February and tell us exactly what they came up with. How can they do it so fast if it takes everybody else months and months and months?
This is what they do. They have, they have all, the whole system set up with all the voter records and everything else. So they just interview people by phone.
Can we tell them what we want them to ask? In other words, we've been working on a referendum for sales tax for, for roads. Can we tell them, we only want them to ask about roads? In other words, a four-year or a 10-year?
No, they will test multiple, they will, they will test multiple things, but one of those will be only roads.
Okay, so we can't say we want either a four-year or a 10-year or a whatever, you know, type of thing just for roads. It has to have every single category. And I can't agree with that.
What do you mean, every single category?
Well, we are trying to work out, are we going to put a referendum for a sales tax for residential roads? And, and I know the conservation end of your ideas, and, and we do have the North Florida Trust going to be doing stuff on that. So we let them concentrate on the conservation. But this to me is, this is a road situation. It is not, do we want conservation land? Do we want parks? Do we want libraries? No. This is a one cent that we're trying to ask and get it written outright, to ask the residents for residential roads. Not for libraries, not for Bridget, you know, just one specific topic. That's where, and, and if they can do the survey fast, that's what I checked, and you said, yeah, that's fine. But I can't see supporting something that can, that's going to take us down a rabbit hole. And that's exactly what it would do, because then you're going to divide and conquer the citizens. We are trying to get something across the finish line that needed to be there years ago to get the roads done. That's why we're so far behind. And when you listen to Mott-McDonald, and they tell you we're 714 million behind, and you're talking about giving, you know, waiting for somebody to give a survey, and the survey can go against libraries, it can go against conservation land, it can go against, multiple topics. We have so many citizens in our districts that have pet projects, okay? We have people out there that are 100% conservative, and they don't want to hear nothing but conservative. We have people, we have them come up here all the time about the library. How many people want more libraries, bigger libraries, more stuff in our libraries? Different programs. That's why, when, when we said we were going to talk about the residential roads, that's what it should be. Residential roads only. And if your group is not willing to say residential roads for four years, residential for eight years, residential for 10, I can't support something like that.
I've already said that they would. So I don't understand.
No, I only, but I only want that topic. I don't want them asking for libraries, conservation land, or anything else.
Then you have, then you're disenfranchising the voters, because we need to know what the voters really want. And they may want exactly that, and it'll come out if that's exactly what they want. Because again, Peggy Hanrahan hates to lose. She's not going to, she's not going to mess with us. She's not gonna, she's not gonna mess with us.
Then I will disenfranchise the voters. And that's all there is to it.
Commissioner Kennard?
Well, just when I thought we could get all five of us going in one direction, apparently we're not. Commissioner Barrick, what, what you're wanting them to do is strictly ask about roads. And we can do that ourselves. We could do that ourselves today and passes. But if it passes, you get zero. Or if it doesn't pass, you get zero. If it fails, it's setting you back what we've been told in the past a good six to eight years before you can, before you can try and run it again. So, what, what Commissioner Davis is, is asking is to allow this group to do this at no cost to the taxpayers. They will have it back to us by March with the results and go, here's the ordinance that passes. It's either all roads, or the ordinance that passes is ninety-eight percent roads and two percent conservation, or ninety-eight percent, ninety-nine percent roads, one percent conservation, or whatever those numbers come back at. They're gonna come, their, their goal is to come back with, this is your ordinance that passes. It does us no good to put an ordinance on there that doesn't pass, then you get zero for roads.
Well, my mother told me, there is nothing free in life. And when you tell me this is free, they're gonna do it for free, there will be strings. No matter what you do, there's gonna be strings. And I'm sure everybody else knows that.
It's not free, Commissioner Davis raised the money.
No, she said it's free to us. We don't have to pay anything for this survey. It's gonna be free, correct? They got their own money already.
Yes.
And if, if it goes their direction that they're trying to push, then they'll get more money. So, there is nothing in this life that is free.
Anyone else before we take the vote?
Okay, there's a motion on the table and a second to continue item H four, the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Vote carries for one. For those that have come to speak at the public hearing, we are going to have open to the public. So, your voice will always be heard, and that will come after the consent agenda. Okay, we're moving on to the consent agenda. Does anyone want to approve it in its entirety, or do you have anything?
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Barrick. Any public comment? Any board comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we have open to the public. So, before you come up, I have asked staff to do something different. The cards, the green cards that you have picked up have numbers on them. So, I'm going to call numbers. If you would like to, if I call one and you are number two, you may have a seat if that is more convenient for you. But just get ready, you should know your number. So, if you look on the green card, there's numbers. We're gonna try to get this in a more orderly fashion. If you come up for a second topic later, that's fine. You'll, you'll just use your same green card. So, I'm gonna call speaker number one. You will have three minutes to speak unless you have a card on file. If you do have a card on file, please notify me of that, so Commissioner Kennard can keep the exact time for you. And the clerk will acknowledge if you actually have that letter on file. Speaker number one. Hello, sir. Please state your name and where you live for the record.
Hello, my name is Nate. I live in Inverness, here in the Highlands South. My name is Nate, the HVAC guy. I came here today to speak out against the one percent sales tax as it is proposed. But you, as well as most of us here, know that everything is said, sorry. But you, as well as most of us here, know that everything that is said here today doesn't matter. You, the county commissioners, have already made up your mind, and they're, you're going to do what you were already paid off to do. By donations and in-personal businesses, we already know that you guys are already in beds with the builders and the developers of most of what's going on here in the county. From Finegan with Air FX, Electrics, Baze with Freedom Farms and Unlimited Insurance, Kennard with over eighty thousand in donations to the campaign from a majority of contractors and developers. We already know that you, the county commissioners, will not and cannot go against the developers and contractors to force them to pay their fair share due to them losing money off of their bottom line, which in turn is yours. By fair shares, what I mean is impact fees. Yes, you already raised them sixty-five percent up to the current level. But we are still behind other counties in this area. Yes, I am for growth, but controlled growth. Infrastructure before the boom, not playing catch-up like we are now with the fifty percent of our poor roads in the county. But take, for example, in Hillsborough, two-thousand-square-foot home costs between twenty to twenty-four thousand, depending if it's urban or rural. Here, thirteen. A seven to eleven thousand dollar difference. The main difference is mobility, which technically ours is not a mobility, and school impacts. Hillsborough, ninety-two hundred to thirteen thousand in mobility. Here, fifty-two. Schools, eighty-two in Hillsborough. Here, fifty-three. It's kind of a double-edged sword. Collect more money, go to the schools, as well as mobility. Also, for a wild card, we can throw on Pasco County. Their mobility, eighteen-five. That's more than all of the impact fees combined here. Also, going on the theme of taxation, our homes. Property taxes, we pay yearly. From what I found on the county and state websites, we just recently upped.
Thank you.
Okay.
Speaker number two?
Again, thank you. Again, my name is Ray Brown from Omessasa. Good afternoon, commissioners. I have two things. I want to bring up the Charlie Kirk Road. I'd like you to stop dragging your feet and go forward with this. Second, property taxes. I want to thank Mrs. Finnegan and Mrs. Brett for your service. What I'm about to say does not apply to you. On the other hand, Mrs. Davis, Mr. Kennard, and Mrs. Baze, you, you people are on a power trip. Where do you think residents have the extra money for raising taxes? We can't just pull it out of our butts. Ms. Baze, last meeting, you told us that you didn't think a hundred-and-twenty-five dollars per person was bad. Also, you told us that you didn't think four-fifty was that bad either. Last month, you gave the Sheriff Department three million dollars for extra patrol without finding out if all other resources have been looked at in his department. You just gave it, you just gave it to him. How long has it been that an audit has been done for this county? We know the library spends taxpayers' monies recklessly. Last year, my tax bill was twelve hundred dollars. I thought that that was fair. This year, it's four thousand dollars. I'm charged for the land. I'm charged for my house. I'm charged for a registration that, because it's a manufactured home. And I've gotta pay a hundred dollars for it, because it's a double-wide. I'm also charged for my carport, that the, the concrete pad was already there. I wouldn't be surprised if you charged me for my dogs, and maybe you do, between the taxes on my property, the insurance on my home, the insurance on my truck, it's over twelve hundred a month. That takes all my investment. All I have left is social security. That's everything for a month. I'm on a fixed income. First, most citrus county, for citrus county, instead of finding ways to, to be more efficient, you raise taxes. So, in closing, every time you see a Walmart, a Walmart, Seven-Eleven, Home Depot, Lowe's, or any other stores where you see a senior working, you could be the reason why they're there, because of your, your taxes. It is, it is unconceivable that I go to the county, the county has my address, and they send my information to an address I haven't been in four years. So, I ended up missing my home exemption. Brevard County has five-hundred-and-sixty thousand people, and we have a hundred-and-fifty-five. And our ta, home taxes over there, we're twenty-four hundred.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you very much.
And there is a value adjustment board. You could look that up, too.
Well, I've tried.
Speaker number three?
Hi, everybody. Um, congratulations. Thank you for your hard work. A compliment to the presentation earlier, very professionally done. You know, I've been very critical. I think I called one of the contractors, Junior High School, with their bad presentation. So, I'm sending around there to you the email that I've already sent to all of you with seven steps toward what we need on the plan to go forward. Thank you for reading it and replying to the one that did. Those things will survive the time gap. Those things will still be needed afterwards. You know, the drop in the mills, accounting. I'm proposing you a plan to account for the low-income seventeen thousand disposable and below, twelve percent, right? And I have seven steps there for you to do. Today, I'm gonna use my minute left to hit on one of the steps, which is the process step, and it's on the email as well. But from, from my citizen point of view, you know, you, you guys are completely out of control here today. People have taken off from their work to come and address you on this agenda item that was put in the envelope. And people have, they're here to do that. And then in one fell swoop, we just, without any public notice, change it completely, suspend the meeting. And then, here's my second complaint. As you did that and voted for it, there was no opening for public input on that. So, you changed the agenda, and then you didn't allow public input. That's exactly the same way that the prior chair brought this forward, four weeks ago, or two weeks ago, I forget. Not on the agenda, no public input. You guys, you guys gotta do, you gotta do better. The, the last thing I want to do is, it's horrible. I heard a six-thousand-dollar roads budget, I heard a sixteen-nine roads budget. Last week, when I presented to you, I was reading from the webpage of the official draft of the proposed budget of the citrus county. That morning, I pulled it off, and it had the sixteen-point-two in it. As I went back home, you know what? That was all pulled out. A hundred and six pages of the budget were deleted online. But let me tell you something. Here's, this is page one thirteen, which is currently labeled page two oh-five, because a hundred pages are missing now. And it's not six, and it's not sixteen-nine. The budget is twenty-one, eight, twelve, nine, thirty-three. And if you back up the carryforward from last year, it's around eighteen-two. And so, one of the things, let's, let's get, let's figure out what the budget is, and then it needs to be available. So, thank you all, and again, congratulations. And this was, it is out of control, but it's exactly the right thing to do.
Thank you. Speaker number four?
Hello, commissioners. My name is Steve Eller from Beverly Hills, Florida. My main reason for being here today is to ask you to move forward with the Charlie Kirk book display and the designation of a road in his honor. We have, my understanding, there are at least five counties who have named a road after Charlie Kirk. And I would ask you to not push this down the road or kick it down the road. Many of us in our community are very passionate about this and would like to see him honored in this way. Someone who championed free speech, civil public dialogue, and actually gave his life for that cause. Just ask you to move that forward, make that an agenda item on your next meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Speaker number five?
Hi, y'all. I'm Margie Eller, and I'm from Beverly Hills. And I, too, am here to ask you to put back on the agenda the memorial for Charlie Kirk, for Charlie Kirk Road. And I'm also interested in one-time-a-year display in the library. I believe he championed free speech. He championed young people to think for themselves and to analyze things. And so, I, I think that a memorial for not only a national icon, but an international icon is, is something that we should do in this county, as being done in other counties across the United States. If you don't do anything in a difficult time, I think that your strength will be limited, your strength as individuals and your strength as a committee here. So, I, I would request that, that you put that on the agenda next time. Thank you for your time, and thank all of you for your time and service.
Thank you for being here. Number six? Is that you, Ms. Wheeler?
Barbara Wheeler from Inverness, Florida. So, first, thank you for recognizing Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week. As the number of people experiencing homelessness continues to increase in citrus county, I ask the commissioners to remember that there is a need for affordable and attainable housing. The Schimberg Center's Florida rental market study reported that in 2023, which is the newest numbers that they have, thirty-one percent of the renters, or four-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-eight in citrus county, were cost-burdened, which means that they are paying more than forty percent of their income for gross rent, which is rent plus utilities. As the county is preparing to update the Comprehensive Development Master Plan and the Land Development Codes, I encourage the county to look at increasing density and height limitations to allow for the ability to build more affordable housing. We need more rentals, and we are not going to build our way out of this housing situation. There is a need for duplexes and triplexes. There's a need for housing for those who live and work here, and not just those who are moving into Florida. And I thank you, and wish you all a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, you, too. Number seven?
Thank you, and congratulations, Chair Finnegan. My name is Peggy Hanrahan. I work for Trust for Public Land. Y'all were discussing our work a little bit earlier. And I really just wanted to thank you for what you're doing. I think you're on a great path. We do, I have worked for Trust for Public Land for twenty-one years, and it's pretty common for us to work with county governments that are also addressing infrastructure needs, road needs, public safety needs. It's really driven by what your voters are most focused on. So, we consider, and I think those of you who did respond to my email and I spoke to you, we consider you the experts on the landscape of citrus county. And so, you all have my number and address in your email inbox. Feel free to reach out. And we will very strictly adhere to the timeline that you heard discussed. And in a more appropriate time, I'm more than happy to answer any questions you might have. But thank you so much, and great job.
Thank you for being here. Speaker number eight?
Susan Nelson, Sala Gardens. First of all, I'd like, I'd like to say thank you so much. We are in good hands, and I can see that. When it comes to roads, I'd like to say. When it comes to roads, I'd like to say I've, we, on an individual and on a general basis, we all have relationships with roads. I grew up on a country road where it was so far out that the pavement stopped right up above the hill, and cars would go flying. And I grew up in the deep country, so I saw a lot of carnage. And so the core of me kind of rages a little bit, trembles when it comes to roads. Henry Ford was not on board with the four walls, four wheels on asphalt. He had a patent on the engine, but he was, he was, he didn't see that innovation as wise. So we have to stay in reality when it comes to roads, too. Other countries, may I say, are further ahead innovating as where America is going to be falling behind. And also, the economy is dependent upon roads, and nothing stays the same. There's going to be a lot of changes. So when you talk about trust, I'd like to talk about flexibility. I'd like to talk about personal relationships with roads. I mean, if you take what we really honestly care about, then what it's replaced with, we want it to look attractive, but it's not what we really wanted in the first place. So I would say find a balance. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Speaker nine.
Chair, just so you know, that was 13, so I don't think eight spoke, which is Mr. Siveska.
Okay. Mr. Siveska, did you want any open to the public? It doesn't matter, I'll give, okay, I'll give everybody a chance, you know, if I've missed any numbers. Since you're standing here, Mr. Bryant.
All right, Curtis Bryant, Flacanto. Great job on that presentation with the roads. That's the first one that I've actually been kind of impressed by. I'm one of those people that's also, you know, hammering you guys about consultants and all of that. Nobody started my time. Anyway, so good job on that. That was a very good presentation. Also, good job on the sales tax. Pushing that back, I think, is the good decision. Allows you guys to get additional information. You guys can never have too much information with this. And to Commissioner Barrick's point, it doesn't mean that this is the route that you guys necessarily take. They may come back to you guys and say, hey, you know, this is what's going to pass. You know, it's going to be conservation, whatever it is. But you guys might decide to go back to your original plan. But it allows you guys to have that information that you guys otherwise wouldn't have. So good job on that. This also, more importantly, gives you guys a road plan. I was kind of concerned with this because we were coming into today, and you guys were getting a road presentation today, and then you guys were going to make a vote on the sales tax, but there was no plan in place for the roads. So now this gives you guys that option to go back for the next three months, four months, to get with staff and determine what's the road plan going forward and how to use whatever funds, if the sales tax was to go through, for that. To echo Mr. Hicks's point, the budget book was uploaded online. It was changed. I don't know why it was changed, but 100 pages are missing, as he said. It's also updated as pictures, so now you can't search through it anymore. So if you do the search function, there's no way to type in, like, roads to see the road, that item come up. So maybe just an update when you guys updated it, maybe that was an issue with the upload. And then congratulations to Steve Howard. You're coming up on your three-year anniversary here in the county. That's next week, I believe. And I want to remind you guys that because, to my knowledge, there's never been an annual review with our senior staff member. He does do reviews with his, with his staff. So I feel that it's on you guys to do that the same for him as well, because it helps him learn what you guys need and become a better employee, just as it does for his employees. So, yep, good job for the rest of the day. Thank you.
Thank you. What were you, Curtis, nine?
Nine, yes.
10? Is there a speaker 10? And thank you for indulging while we try a new way. I'm just trying to make us work a little more efficiently. We'll work out the bugs later.
Hi, Tracy LaCanto. I appreciate the ability to be able to speak today in reference to the tax. I do like the idea of the possible survey. My concern is, I've been here for 30 years, and I have never once been called on any of these surveys that have previously been done for our county. So my question is, who is it that gets called? Are they a select few members of the community? Or, you know, I don't understand exactly how your surveys work. Because like I said, I have been here for 30 years. I've never received anything by mail or call as far as any type of survey for our county. So that's a grave concern I have, is how is that going to be, you know, conducted for the community? Otherwise, I do like the idea very much. I'm not against the taxes if it's done appropriately. I'm not for only roads. I'm sorry, I'm not. I feel that it should go towards our fire department, our sheriff's department as well, because our county is very wide in tourists. And these tourists also not only use our roads, but they use our fire services and they use our sheriff's department services. So I think it should also be looked into going towards that. I am not for roads only. And I honestly would like to see more transparency on how money is used. I don't feel there's enough. And they're just, I'd like for the county, our taxpayers, honestly have more say. There's been a lot of changes without publics being able to come up and speak, and I think that's wrong. We should honestly have the right to be able to discuss our concerns, and y'all sincerely listen to those concerns. Sometimes I think you do listen, but lately, it seems, apparently, decisions are already made, you're just kind of going through the format of it. I could be wrong, and if I am, I apologize. But I have seen some evidence where it just honestly appears that way. The other thing is, I really strongly request again that y'all reconsider having at least one evening meeting, because it's honestly not fair to the working public who work 95 jobs, or 8 to 4 jobs, or 7 to 3 jobs, to have to try to take time off from work to come to meetings. I don't understand why you cannot consider that. Y'all get paid for being here, so if it's a matter of hours, maybe you can just, on the days we have meetings, adjust your hours where you come in later, something. But I really feel strongly, I've talked to many, many people, and there are many people that would wish to have evening meetings so they can come and share their feelings and concerns for our county. Other than that, I think that's basically it. I do appreciate y'all. I appreciate you being here. I just really pray that we can work better as a team as far as our board and our Commissioners. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Be blessed.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for all you do, and I want to thank you for the consensus that you all. Oh, sorry, Mike O'Connell from Floral City. I was really, really pleased to see everyone in agreement at the meeting earlier this month concerning Charlie Kirk. Really great to see that. And I'm just wondering, at the pizza party, will everybody be invited to free pizza? Madam Chair, would you authorize the county administrator to put on the agenda as items to bring about this, at least a discussion about a display in the libraries, a temporary display, once a year, for Charlie Kirk?
I'll address that after.
Okay. And also a memorial highway for Charlie Kirk? For, really for the residents of this county? He was a bridge builder, brought people together. So my only suggestion is that it be a thoroughfare, maybe that connects with other counties or another county. Commissioner Kennard, at the meeting earlier this month, said that he thought that some rules should be drawn up as far as displays in libraries, and I totally agree with that. I think, I think they should be, they should be strict, in fact, because we don't want to have, as you said, we don't want to have everybody coming up every week saying, well, I think we need to have a memorial for so-and-so. It should be, you know, a president, an assassination of a big-town public figure, something like that. Not to take anything away from the person who spoke earlier about rentals, we need more rentals in the county. I disagree with that wholeheartedly, and I'll tell you why. I know she does great work, but we need more ownership in this county. Homeowners, people that take pride in, people take pride in homes that they own in, that they own, not just, renting is essentially, I've been saying this for years, I've heard it from hundreds of people, it's flushing the money down the toilet. So it benefits the county when people own. I don't know if people understand how much money the state gives in ship grants. It's unbelievable. I think if more people knew that, if there was a way that the county could help to publicize homeownership instead of rentals, because rentals is a trap. And oftentimes, it's corporations that really don't give a, rhymes with trap, about the county, as homeowners care about the county they live in. So, five seconds to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Greg Hoying, Floral City. I was certainly glad to see the focus staying on our county roads because that's such an important issue. I know people in Pine Ridge, and I know how bad those roads are. But I was a little dismayed when I saw on that graph that solid block in southeast Citrus, which was Floral City. And that's what I want to talk to you about. I feel like we're the redheaded stepchild of Citrus County. Let's talk about homeless. I walk the bike path every day, and I see homeless almost every day. They camp at the Golliver Bridge, they camp at the Withlopapka Park. I don't see any outreach from the county. I see it from the churches. They try to feed these people, but they need someplace to stay. Speaking of Withlopapka Park, I don't know, I know that's a state park, and I don't know what you can do about it. But every time that, we get a gully washer, that road, that swell washes out, and it makes a hazard for motorcyclists. Speaking of motorcyclists, every weekend, we get these sport bikes because they love those curvy roads, but they go past my house sometimes in excess of 100 miles an hour. Okay, I don't see any police presence to stop it. This has been happening for years, and I've never seen any attempt to ever slow these people down, because one of these days, someone's going to die. I'd also, I'd like to see some kind of outreach in tourist development. Some of these businesses are struggling. I don't see anything promoting southeast Citrus. I think that's, that's a very, very worthwhile part of our county that is just being neglected. And lastly, I would like to say something about the Charlie Kirk Memorial Highway. I would really like to see that. Specifically, I think Gulf to Lake would be a prime road to use, or possibly Florida Avenue. I think Charlie Kirk was an iconic figure, and he'll go down in history, and I think we should remember him. Thank you, that's all I got.
Thank you. Is it time for you, Mark?
My number 14. I'm 14.
Let's do it.
Good afternoon. Mark Siveska, I live in Pine Ridge, 3633 North Wagon Point. And that, and I would like to take this opportunity to represent the 11,000 residents of Pine Ridge on that one. And I, I'm a little dismayed because the board came to a decision on, on road networks and decided to go unconstrained without public comment. Let me say that again. H2 was done, and a board decision was made without public comment. Sometimes that happens. But here's what that just set up. I'll give you a couple of examples. The software, the decision trees will guide you to treat SCOP roads. So you're going to be treating SCOP roads that are going to be redone in a year, or two, or three. Unconstrained, that's what happens. Constrained would, that would have been one of the constraints that could have been levied. Treating lime rock road, lime rock-based roads the same way you do soil-cement-based roads. They need to be treated differently because there is no reconstruction on a soil-cement road. There is reconstruction in a lime rock-based road. That is another example. And without that differentiation done in the decision trees, you're going to get a recommended set of outcomes that are there. The other thing we've talked about in the past, and I'm just going to jump to, let's see if I could go to page 612 of the agenda packet, the KPIs in Current Health Network, where it talks about functional class of roads. Some of our roads are designated arterial roads. But the importance of our road structure is defined by our citizens' use of those roads. And what you'll find in numerous situations is that roads that are designated as arterials, which in the decision trees get favorable, better weighting priority or a higher weighting priority, end up with traffic counts less than some of the collectors in the neighborhood. And I speak specifically about Pine Ridge, El Cam, and Mustang. Those three have higher traffic counts, daily average traffic counts, than many segments of the arterials throughout the county. So when we start looking at these kind of nuances, and these are subtle points, but when you're getting to a point where you're underfunding the required value by as much as we are, the required money required to get our roads up to a specific area, these kinds of inefficiencies add to the degradation of our road network in that. And so on that, those are just three examples that I could go through. There are others, but I don't want to belabor the point on that one. I think there may be an opportunity in the future where we may want to have a discussion on the prioritization of those fundings. One of the things that happened very recently was the allocation of money by district. And one of the things that came through that was those communities that were disadvantaged because they were large-lot communities, or their roads were soil-cement-based roads, they were disadvantaged in that regard. And it was not until the Commissioners decided to allocate money by district that we started to see improvements. Give you an example, in Pine Ridge, 50 years of neglect, half a century of neglect. And that decision to allocate by district started changing it so that we could begin to see, your citizens who have been paying this money for 50 years, we could begin to see improvements in the roads. Those are the kinds of examples that I think merit further review. And on that note, I thank you for your time. And congratulations, because you just stepped into a difficult position. I'm sure you knew you were getting into it, but once again, congratulations. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you today.
Thank you. And you were 13, Mark?
Ma'am?
You were 13 or 14?
I was, that was 14. 13 was, I picked it up for another item, agenda item.
Speaker 15?
13 must get.
He had it.
Hi. Carleen Semper, Inverness Village 4. I think the roads are great once I get out of my subdivision. I'm just saying. Anyway, I'm confused, I'm asking legitimate questions. I think an MSTU would be a great idea for the connector roads and the main roads. I don't have a problem with that as a taxpayer. I am curious why we're paying for repaving for people, for platted subdivisions. To me, that would be like something that you would set up special assessment districts for those subdivisions, where they can pay for their own repaving. I would assume that the different subdivisions that are throughout Citrus County might have more needs than a different subdivision that is in the southeast part of the subdivision, or the county. I always look at it as benefit received. Nobody wants to pay to help Inverness Village 4. The taxpayers don't want to. I get that. That's our subdivision. We receive the benefit of that. So I don't understand why the platted subdivisions aren't included in this, especially since they exceed over 50% of the very poor roads. Why, why can't there be districts that are set up for the subdivision itself? Because the normal driver, you know, on the, you know, the connector roads and the main roads... Because the normal driver, you know, on the, you know, the connector roads and the main roads, of course. Those are roads that everybody uses. But the normal person that lives, for me example, in Inverness Village 4, I don't hop in my car and drive through Pine Ridge, you know, and check things out. I think you need to look more at the benefits received, and who's receiving it, and spread it that way. That's just a suggestion. I just don't understand why platted subdivisions would be included in the whole everybody pay resurfacing project. So that's just, I'm curious why they're included. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. 16?
Good afternoon. Deb Spence, Crystal River. There's been a lot of talk about Charlie Kirk and doing roads and memorials and all these other things. Whenever I spoke at the lab meeting, I said, I think that less than 10% of the people in this county knew who Charlie Kirk was before he died. And I think that that's an important thing to look at. It's not always what somebody does after their death, when they get recognized. I am opposed to it. I think that we need to start looking at our own people. Last week was Ginger West's birthday. Ginger was the founder of Family Resource Center. I don't see anybody looking to do a road for Ginger, and I think that would be very appropriate for the people that she saved in this county. The way that she highlighted homelessness, unhoused, and unfed people. Ginger deserves a road named after her. What about Corporal Lahara, who was mercilessly killed on the highway doing his job, and who suffered for two years, and whose family suffered for two years? Where's his road? He affected more people, and more people in Citrus County know who he is than they do about Charlie Kirk. How about Deputy Rod, who was so great with the school kids, and whose school kids have missed him tremendously? I think that we're talking about emotional things. And I'd just like to read to you, it's just another way to divide us. When we talk about roads and things like that, I was here five years ago when the present commissioner, the board chair, sat there and said that he's not doing road repairs. There's no money for it, I'm gonna put the money someplace else, knowingly and willingly, and this board went along with it, and nobody argued about it. When you get to this other chairperson, I can bring up my note here. He was, he used language that was disrespectful. It was insulting. It was demeaning, it was rude, and not one person on this board, and there's members on this board who were there then, said nothing. Last time I spoke here, I mentioned something about one of the commissioners, and my comment was struck from the record. Why were none of these other comments ever struck from the record? Why was my comment struck from the record? To me, that's a First Amendment violation. I have a freedom of speech. I can say what I think and what I feel, and to have my comment stricken, and none of these other comments, and I can give you thousands of them, over the last five years, and none of them, nobody here commented on that. It was all deaf, dumb, and blind, until I mentioned something that one of you found offensive. There's so much offensive words that are spoken in this chamber, and I'd like you to have a little bit of consistency, because that's what we need in this board, is consistency. And to say that I'm upset about being censored is, well, I am.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hello. Janine Eady, Inverness Village is 4. And I am here to ask you about a safety issue. It does have to do with roads, but it is a safety issue that has been maintained before. The street of Walker Street and Independence Highway has become such a disaster that someone is going to be killed or severely injured, either by T-boning, or getting hit in the back because of how slow you have to go out of there, onto that highway, or how slow you have to slow down, so that you do not bottom out your car. It has been maintained before by just filling in from Walker up to the highway, so that it is not a safety issue anymore. And I implore you to look at just doing that little piece, so that it is not a safety hazard to enter or exit from Walker Street onto Independence Highway. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers? Anyone else that would like to speak at open to the public? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close open to the public.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I go?
Yes, please.
This'll be brief. Mr. Hoynes, I am working on Citrus Hope through Catholic Charities. It's just a very long process, but I am making incremental progress, I promise. I'm all over it. One of the things I'm working on. Ms. Semper, you bring up an excellent point. It's unfair right now with ad valorem. If you live on a private road or a sand road, you are paying ad valorem for general paving in the county. The beautiful thing about an MSTU is that it's a lot like a fire or stormwater assessment. There are actually discounts for various things. So an MSTU would be discounted if you're on a sand road, or on a private road that the county does not maintain. Mr. Howard, can we look into Walker onto Independence Highway in IV4? Is that something we have filled in before?
Carl's, I'm sure Carl's in the audience listening to this, and we'll look into it and verify.
Okay. And that's it? Thank you.
Commissioner Barrett?
I listened to the gentleman, the red streets in Floral City. If you look at that map, I asked about that also. Those aren't Floral City, that's the Highlands. You know, and you can't blow that map up enough to see what streets those little red lines are on that metro forecasting. But those are the Highlands, which is part of Commissioner Bayes's district. Okay? There are red streets in Floral City itself, but not like in the Highlands, okay? Platted and unplatted. Citrus Springs is a platted subdivision, but the roads in Citrus Springs were accepted by the county for maintenance. There's a difference between a platted lot, not accepted, and a platted lot, accepted. Okay? There are different ways that roads are. In Pine Ridge, those are platted, and they were accepted roads. Beverly Hills, platted and accepted. Okay? You have certain sections in Homeless Acid that are platted and accepted. The way you tell the difference is, the street sign is white and green, or that's platted and accepted, or the street sign is white and blue. And those are county street signs. White and blue means it's an accepted road for the name. This way, the fire department can get there, the mailman can get there, the policeman can get there. You can send your friends there, because they can find your address. But that doesn't mean they are county maintained. Okay? So you have to be aware there are different categories under subdivisions. I agree. We do need to start taking responsibility. Mr. Howard has been here just short of three years, and yes, he's supposed to get a yearly review. I think we should find sometime that the board would come up with some review and work on it, so that Mr. Howard knows what he's doing wrong, what he's doing right, what we'd like to see him do in the future. Okay? It's just common practice that employees and employers do, usually on a yearly basis. And it's been, I know I've been on the board a year, and it was not done in 2025 at all. So I think we should, as a board, take into consideration that. Let me see what else I had down here. As for the librarian Charlie Kirk, Charlie Kirk was a very nice man. Our libraries are set up to have displays. And I have, in the past, suggested the following. The displays are students' work, or students' things that are coming up, like the kids do the science fair, their projects. All right? The first graders did this, the second graders did that. And those can be done without any problem. So you have a month of that. Happenings in the county. We have Cruder Fest, we have the Manatee Fest, we have the Dragon Boats. Those are things happening in the county. Federal holidays. Everybody knows what the 11 federal holidays are. Maybe a display, and the federal holidays don't last a month, but they, you know, those will be something for display. Veterans and special awards. So we have like Veterans Day, and we have county people that are veterans, that are somebody that we know, and somebody that, it's for us. The libraries are for the citizens of this county. At least, that's what I thought, when I went to the library. This is my county library. So the displays should reflect our citizens. And we've got some really, really good citizens, you know, whether it's women veterans, whether it's men's veterans, whether it's World War II veterans, okay? And we also have other things that we could do, special awards. So if you want to do the Freedom Award, fine. You have a week of all the Freedom Award winners, not just one. Okay? And then we have other things out there, like available jobs, career sourcing. So I agree, we need to do something, but it's a policy that the county board has to come up with. And right now, the board came up with a policy, I think it was 2022, as to the displays, and we were given a copy of that this week. I didn't bring that with me, and I should have, that's my fault. Because it does have some things, like it does months, okay? But I think we need to start getting with the library, and personalizing our library to reflect our county. Now, that's a personal thing. Maybe the other commissioners don't agree with that. But I think that makes more sense than just saying, well, this was a good man. And I'm not saying he wasn't a good man. But there are a lot of good men. Bob Hageman died November 4th, and he was an excellent man. George Rusaw died. He was a wonderful county man. Lot of people he helped in this county, rich and poor. So the thing is, to single out one person is very, very hard for me to agree to, but to single out a whole bunch, to be done at the same time at the libraries, to me would make more sense for us as a county. And I think that was the last thing I had from all the comments, and I wrote down everybody's things. Thank you.
Commissioner Kennard?
Sure, I'll go now. Commissioner Barrett, thank you for mentioning George Rusaw in there. I was going to say, Deb, just a couple folks that came to mind that you left off of there, and George Rusaw was certainly one of them. Very, very successful builder, who could have just drifted off in retirement. I'm sure that Bridgette would have appreciated that. But that didn't happen. He went to work for those less fortunate than him. Ray Cortez is another one that came to mind. Thankfully, Ray is still with us. He has, and hopefully for many, many years. Ray has brought many people to Christ, including myself. Thousands and thousands and thousands of people right here in our community. He has been preaching the gospel here in our community, built that church up with his congregation, from back when they were sitting in fold-up chairs in a cafeteria. That's somebody that if we're gonna talk about great men, Ray Cortez certainly rises to the top of my list, or very close to it. So the Charlie Kirk stuff, what I would ask there is that we don't get too far in front of ourselves just yet. I know people are anxious to have something there. They want us to overrule the library advisory board, they're unhappy with what happened there. I have, at their last meeting, I suggested that as a policy board, we should set a policy and stay out of it. I have put in a significant amount of time putting together, I did read word for word the existing library policy that was sent to us. I think, given the climate, not just over the last couple months, but the climate in our community and nationwide, I think that policy would need a significant amount of work to make it applicable to the conversations of today. So I put in a lot of work in putting together a library policy that all of you will have before the next meeting, before the next agenda comes out. Take a look at it. If you hate it, throw it in the trash. If you want to cut it up and do something else with it, if you want to add to it, take away from it. But I think it touches on all the salient points that need to be touched on in a library policy, in a library display policy. And can get this board nose up, if you will, in focusing on the greater things of the community that this board should be focused on, policy-wise. The, let's see here, I had here a thumbs up on the roads and sales tax issue. There were a couple people came up and said, your minds are already made up. That couldn't be further from the truth. You know, we get the agenda like everybody else does a week in advance, and you go through it, you do your research, and you talk with staff, talk with administration. And probably each one of us has an idea of where we're gonna go with a specific agenda item. But there's sometimes even, you open your mouth a little early up here and say, I'm gonna second it, but I'm not gonna support it. And then the conversation comes up, and you go, you know what? That makes sense, I can get on board with that. Then you hear another commissioner say, you know what? I can go this direction. So minds change up here. We don't, as hopefully most, if not everybody here understands, and those watching, we can't talk to each other in advance of a meeting. The first chance we get to exchange ideas on a specific agenda item is when it comes up, when it's time to talk about it. And so the idea is to open your ears, open your minds, listen to what they're saying. Even though I may have a preconceived idea of the direction that I'm gonna go, when I listen to one of four people that I have a tremendous amount of respect for, that have been elected by the residents of the county, sometimes my mind changes. And I think that happens with everybody up here. I've seen it with multiple boards since 2016 up here. Ron Kitchen was probably the toughest bird to change. But even he changed his mind on a couple things, and he would tell you when he did. Let's see, Nate brought up something about a campground and $80,000. I don't know what that was all about. I'd be happy to, you know, talk to you about it. I just, I don't know where that number came from, or what campground you're talking about. So I'd be happy if you want to email me, or call me, whatever. I'd be happy to address that with you. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Commissioner Bayes?
I think a lot of it's been covered. As far as Floral City, to Greg's point, you know, in '24, we did six and a half miles, and in '25, we did 12.5 miles through District 4, I should say. And you're right, I talk with the sheriff all the time about doing things out there. It's commonly referred to as the walking dead sometimes, sadly to say. So you are right. We've got a lot of work to do in the Floral City area, and trying to make inroads. We at least got Orange Avenue done temporarily. It's just big-ticket items. We're looking at a popka, in fact, that's coming up later on the agenda, so that's going to get done here shortly. And then next year is Gospel Island in District 4. And for the library, you know, our statistics in our county are just, they're kind of grim. I mean, when you look at them, I guess I look at the library as a place of literacy, and let's stay focused on the mission of the library, when our kindergarten readiness stands at 37%. Our third grade reading scores are at 53%. Our third grade math scores are at 62%, and our eighth grade reading scores are at 47%. There's 1,400 people between the ages in '24 that don't have a GED. The more alarming is ages 25 and above are 11,600. So when I think about, and our unemployment rate is 6.6 right now. So when I think about Citrus County, and I think about our libraries, let's stay mission-focused. Those people are our future of tomorrow. And one of the things that I'm passionate about is finding ways to create higher-wage living jobs. And I think that can help turn the corner for a lot of what's happened here in Citrus County over the years. We look at the demographics, are they changing? Absolutely. I'd like to say that we could turn back the clock and we could go back to the 70s when we used to be able to drive up and down roads and see the beach. That's not possible, and it's never going to be possible. If Florida was a country, it would be the 15th-largest economy in the world. Unfortunately, we're not going to put a chain around Citrus County and say it's not going to be found. It is found. I think this board has done a very good job of trying to be very selective about what has been approved and not approved for development. When I look at, there's been things that were approved back in the 80s that we didn't have a choice then. But they come back for a modern, for a modernized development, but the development was plotted and planned long before this board ever got here. So what's new? We've turned down several things. But some things we're not going to be able to turn down. I guess that's all I've got.
Thank you. Well, I think that Commissioner Davis and Commissioner Baze took care of the issues within Walker and Independence and Floral City. Thank you for Trust for Public Land and Barb Wheeler for your comments. I do want to address the book displays because we're still getting a lot of email about that, and some people came up passionate about that. So here is the truth of the matter. Even if the Library Advisory Board or this board said after the last meeting, tomorrow, displays, Charlie Kirk and all the library, they couldn't do it. We didn't have enough materials, is my understanding. There has been an increased interest. So what does the library do when there's an increased interest in books or materials? They order more, and that's what they're doing. So at some point, it, it might be appropriate to do that because there'll be a great interest, and then we'll have the materials actually to do it. With respect to my colleagues talking about great men and, and other random displays, it's the library. So they're not looking to have, with all due respect, science fair projects and different, it's book displays. They're trying to get people interested in reading. So it's going to be books that people want to read. And you're right, it, it was a firestorm of people saying, we want to go to the library. Why don't we see this display? Because we want these books to read of Charlie Kirk's. We, we want to know more. We want to read more. We want to hear what he has to say, but they weren't available yet. So I believe the library is working on that, so, so just be patient. All that will come. Talking about our roads. So I understand to Mr. Spitz's point, there, there wasn't public comment at that point because we didn't take a vote. It was just consensus. And maybe we should have as a board, and I should have directed that, about what unconstrained, I think we got a good point of what unconstrained and constrained was. But the consensus when we were saying unconstrained is not constraints put on the program by these five people that you see here. Obviously, and they presented that there were already constraints on there. Dollar amount was a constraint. We, we weren't fully funded, obviously. So what was the budget amount that the board put in? Constraint. The other constraint that staff has already, they already know, they are taking out SCOP roads. They are taking out any soon-to-be septic-to-sewer projects because they'll rip those roads up and they're going to repave them. They're taking out, let's see, I put the SCOP, and water projects. Any projects that are coming down a road that's going to destroy those roads, they're going to put those off and wait because those projects will contain it. So yes, when this board voted unconstrained, it was unconstrained by us. Obviously, staff have constraints that they're putting in to, again, make sure those dollars are spent as effectively as possible. Ms. Duncan was asking about surveys. We don't know how that will be conducted. Commissioner Davis said it would be by phone, that would be left to the professionals. But you did have a point about fire. I'm not saying I'm, I'm for this, I'm just saying she threw it out there. If the money was used for that, and I have said a decrease in taxes, we have individual fees for fire. We have an individual fee for stormwater. I don't know. If one is passed, could that be tied into a reduction in something else? May, maybe. I, I like the community thinking that's how we get to a solution. Let me make sure I'm not missing anything. I do want to say to Ms. Spence, she, she spoke of Centura, I don't know if she's still here. I, I have no idea if she was talking about our meeting or the Library Advisory Board meeting, but that caught me off guard. I, I haven't heard anything about that at all. So she could always follow up with an email if she's still listening. And Mr. Howard, the other thing that threw me off was about pages of the budget missing and some changes. Were we reworking something with staff?
Yeah, I don't, I have no knowledge of that other than I just emailed Tammy. She wants to come and take the, if she's here, she can take the podium, but it sounds like there's a difference between tentative and adopted. So it's not like I directed staff to pull numbers down or take pages and make them disappear. That didn't happen. But she can explain what, what happened and didn't happen, and part of it's for the GFOA award, the way the process is, except I'll let Tammy explain that.
So.
Can you state your name and position?
My name is Tammy Wilson. Do I need to say where I live?
No, but you could say, tell the public what you do.
Budget and Management Director. So the original budget that was posted is, was the tentative budget that came to the tentative hearing. That tentative budget is built on the desire of the board and the way the board wants that formatted. That has never been posted on our site before. It has only been available on the agenda. I made the decision because we had so many people asking for it that it was better for transparency that it be posted right on our website. When, after your final budget hearing and many changes, which were one, increasing roads. As the one citizen said, you know, the road budget went up at your request and you approved it. Then the final budget gets post, got posted to the website, which is typical. Previously, the only thing that was ever posted was the final, the final one. So the tentative one is still available. There are no pages missing. It's just a different format. It's kind of condensed, shrunk down into smaller piece, one page instead of five pages for a department. There's actually, in my opinion, there's more information in the final budget than there is in the tentative budget. Because of all the changes that we've made.
So no information is missing?
No information is missing. All budgets are there.
And I see some responses. So could you personally do maybe a favor to this board? Just look at it again and make sure, you know, after this meeting, we'll, we'll double, triple check.
Yeah, I was, I was doing that way. They were talking, so.
Thank you very much for doing that.
And there is a special format, we have to format the final budget in for GFOA and the budget award. And that's something we've earned for years and years, so it's a very honorable thing to receive that, so. Any other questions Denise?
Howard, any questions for Ms. Wilson?
Chair, I'm sorry. Also, Tammy, I think you said that the tentative budget is still available.
Still available. Yes.
Where, where can they find it?
As an agenda attachment through the clerk. If you go to the agenda for the tentative budget, which is where it's always, always been and will always be.
So the budget that's missing was the tentative because we have a final budget and you pulled the tentative off? Makes perfect sense.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any questions, Boyd? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Howard. Okay, with that, let's move into regular business.
Madam Chair, motion to approve E1, A through H.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Kennard. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, 5-0.
Motion to approve E2?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Kennard. Any public comment? Any board comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So I did not take open comment on the bids. This is my, my first day, so I will welcome anyone.
I was wondering about that. I thought maybe I just missed it.
Yes, thank you. Getting into the group, does anyone have any public comment on the bids? We can reopen that if you'd like. Okay, thank you.
Motion to approve E3?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Davis. Any public comment? Any board comment?
Yeah.
Commissioner Barrett?
Okay. They're talking about a golf crossing across State Road 19. I want to know more about what kind of golf crossing because that can open up a lot more than the 486 because that's not just a county road, that's a state road. And I don't agree with allowing them, the state has said it before, not across 19. They have the golf carts on one side in Chris River, they have golf carts. So what are they actually asking for when it says golf cart crossing State Road 19? I can agree with number one, and I can agree with number two. But number three, I would need a lot more before I could say, yeah, go ahead and ask the state for it. And put my name to it.
Any other board comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, 3-1, and waiting for Commissioner Davis.
Madam Chair, sorry to interrupt. I just want to make sure the clerk gets the minutes to show that you did go back and ask for open to the public and that there was no one. So, okay, thank you.
She's on top of it. Thank you.
I figured, I just.
I appreciate both of you. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to approve E4, A, B, C, D, E, F.
Motion by Commissioner Barrett?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kennard. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, 4-0.
Motion to approve E5?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Barrett. Any public comment? Any board comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 4-0.
Motion to approve E6?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Barrett, second by Commissioner Baze. Any public comment? Any board comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 4-0.
Motion to approve E7?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Barrett, second by Commissioner Baze. Any public comment? Any board comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 4-0.
Motion to approve E8?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Barrett, second by Commissioner Baze. Any public comment? Any board comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 4-0.
Motion to approve E9?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kennard, second by Commissioner Baze. Any public comment? Any board comment?
Yeah, as far as I know, they added the April 9 and 10 for my ACC1 class to the proposed schedule. Because I reminded them that I have to be away.
Okay, did that change the dates?
Otherwise, everything was fine.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 4-0. And did I miss any other public comment? I think I nailed it all. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Davis, can I catch up with you, please?
E3?
Yes, E3 through E9.
Do you need me to say aye for all of them? Just, aye to all, yeah.
Thank you. Now we are to outstanding commission items, Ms.?
Madam Chair, E10.
E10.
Motion to approve E10?
Thank you. Not online.
Chair. I believe that's E and B.
A and B. And C.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Davis, a second by Commissioner Baze. Any public comment? Any board comment? It's not on my agenda either, but they were added. Usually they add them. Do we want to, give me a second, let me read out what that is for the public, since they're telling me it's not on any agenda that they have.
This is a great one. Go ahead and read it.
Okay. This is for the Small County Outreach Program Agreement. That's SCOP. That's state help with our roads for milling and resurfacing South Apopka Avenue from East Anna Jo Drive to US 41. A long time coming. So what we are asking for is to adopt and authorize the chairman to execute a resolution authorizing the chairman to enter into an agreement between Citrus County and the state of Florida for paving that road. And to execute the agreement for road milling and resurfacing. FDOT portion will be 1,222,702. County's participation will be 570,595. The SCOP is a wonderful program that the state helps us pay for these major arterial roads. Any public comment? Any further board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Looking to make sure I'm not missing anything else. All right, we are up to outstanding commission items. Ms. Veronica Campsrower.
Just like to thank you for your excellent pronunciation of that, which I clearly cannot execute myself. Veronica Campsrower, Special Projects Manager, Chair, Commissioners. Thank you guys for having me today. I have very few updates. The only one that you will see reflected on your sheet is the pavement management systems implementation, which is complete except for identifying those roads and going through that process. So what we'll do is we'll take this off of the list, and we will go ahead and add fiscal year 27's or 26's resurfacing to this list, if that is okay with the board. And then we just have a few other notes here. Deltona SCOP resurfacing, that was previously off-track. It is now back on-track. The testing has been completed and it did come back okay. So there was a little bit of an administrative delay there. But now that the testing has been completed, we can complete the thermoclastic striping and get everything set to complete and close out that project. Betts Farm, we do not have a PDC hearing date scheduled, but staff has been working with the applicant to determine what is needed to get that date on the calendar. And then finally, we have determined that we will be kicking off our Fort Island Trail Park Boat Ramp Expansion Study next month. So we should have a kickoff meeting date for you at the next meeting.
Boyd, any comments or questions?
Am I authorized to remove the pavement management system from the list?
Boyd?
Yes.
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 Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Howard, do you have anything?
Just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving next week, the public watching and throughout the community and this board. But a lot of good stuff happening throughout the county. And congratulate staff as we're getting, we have one more meeting in December, but we have a big, big year ahead of us in 2026. But we've got a lot of wins in the win column as a result of this board's leadership and Team Citrus doing amazing stuff across this county. So it's great to serve as your county administrator.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving to you. Commissioner Baze?
I have nothing, just same sentiments as our administrator. Happy Thanksgiving.
Commissioner Davis?
We are continuing to move towards some sort of resolution with the Medical Examiner Board. So I would make a motion to approve K1, support for Marion County's response.
Motion to approve K1?
Second.
Actually, I thought I did make the motion.
I'll second both of you.
No, I said I made the, I made the motion.
Aye.
Well, then, second.
Okay.
Motion by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Kennard. Any public comment? Any board discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
And I have a TDC recap. Thank you, Mr. Cole, for keeping me organized. Very excited about our new staff member, Nick, and I hope I'm going to get his. Very excited about our new staff member, Nick, and I hope I'm gonna get, is it Popem? Is that pronounced correctly? Formerly of Tampa Bay News Nine, he's the new marketing and content manager for um, the TDC or the VCB. Really impressive. And it was funny when he started talking, I was like, you are on camera talent, aren't you? And he's like, yes. He's really good. So this is gonna be a big, big, big boon to the staff. So good job recruiting him. We have under, this is something I've been wanting for a long time, and then suddenly it's happening, and I'm super happy about it. Eco-compliant Partner Program, we have some bad actors, especially those that come in from out of county to um, you know, they do cheap tours and they harass manatees and do bad things like that. So the eco-compliant Partner Program is going to essentially be a good housekeeping seal of approval for the tour companies that practice, strictly practice manatee banners and all those other good stuff. Another initiative we've been working on for a while is um, made some good strides when Mr. Cole presented at the um, some Citrus County School Meetings and so forth. And Derek Bitner is um, really up, up to speed on all of this now. Is the workforce, trying to develop hospitality workforce through WTC and through our high schools. People don't, don't necessarily understand that, well, number one, waiting tables at a really good restaurant, you could actually make some pretty serious bank there. But it's not just waiting tables. There's also, you know, hotel management. There's all kinds of other um, aspects to hospitality. So we're integrating more with the Citrus County School District to get some more of that training done. And then the new visitation analytics are going to provide kind of scary Big Brother level and depth analysis of not only where visitors, local visitors and residents come from, but where they go once they're in the county visiting, um, which is pretty cool. And we have a restructure. This is something that I'm worked on at four CF as well. Grants can be a big pain in the tuchus to do for like twenty-five hundred bucks or whatever, and it's an enormous amount of paperwork. So we've streamlined that and it's now a, I believe it's a live PDF, right? So um, changeable online. And without further ado, it is now manatee season and happy Thanksgiving.
Uh, Commissioner Cannard?
Yeah, first of all, I want to start off with um, I guess for lack of a better term, giving props to Steve, Miles, and any other staff that were involved in the monthly in-focus videos on YouTube. They had asked me if I would make a comment or a short video on the uh, on the artificial reef expansion. I said, oh yeah, sure, I'll do that. I could not have stumbled through it more in front of the camera.
They made you look good, didn't they?
Finished, finished up with the video and I thought, oh lord, that came out terrible. And um, uh, last night I get this email and um, watched the video and I thought, wow, I mean, that's a work, work. What you did with lousy contents, unbelievable. Or Miles did, whoever's responsible, thank you.
We have some very talented staff.
Sure, was it AI?
Yeah, it may have been AI. Anyway, those, those in-focus videos, um, I'm sure that, that we've watched them. But for the people in the audience, people at home watching, uh, it really is worth, worth a watch to see what's going on, the good stuff that's happening. Cause there's an awful lot, you know, you sit up here and you get to see the sausage made. It's not always pretty. But ultimately, when you see the end product, the good stuff that's happening out there. So thank you. That's good information. The um, I want to address quickly the, or briefly, the sales tax initiative. I'm hoping, I'm uh, I'm encouraged that most of us are together going in a, going in one direction on this. I would like to see us get uh, even more so on the same page ultimately as we move um, towards uh, towards January and then ultimately into March. The Steering Committee did um, a very good job at gathering community input. I, I've spoken with a couple folks in that committee this week. You know, of course, they had nothing but incredibly nice things to say uh, about Don Taylor and the work that he did putting that together. I don't want any of them to feel like uh, that was a wasted effort or wasted time. That information has been brought forward. Uh, what we will do now is get additional information. And then ultimately, this board gets to decide. You know, what this, this uh, Florida Land Trust, is that it?
Trust for Public's land.
Trust for Public Land. Uh, ultimately, the ordinance that they bring back to us, we will use the information that the Steering Committee got in making a decision to ultimately decide what, what we do with um, what we do with either moving forward with this or not. I do want to make sure that we don't lose sight of um, there's been discussion of a citizen oversight committee that would meet periodically just to make sure that every last dollar uh, that would be collected is going to exactly what we've said it was gonna go to. That, you know, that takes, that takes some degree of government out of it. This group, you know, whether it's a meeting quarterly or semi-annually or whatever it is, can say, yes, this is the CIP that the board said, these are the projects the board said was uh, would get done with this money. And we can confirm, we've gone through it, and that's exactly what the money's gone for. It's easy enough to put those numbers out there, but unless you've got a group of unelected um, uh, residents sitting down, looking at the numbers, looking at the projects, and then saying, yep, the money's going exactly where they said it would. Then I, I think, I think you lose some of, some of the public trust if you don't have those public eyes on it. So I hope that we will continue to do that. And again, I've advocated right from the beginning uh, that we have a CIP, if you will, a list of, if we collect twenty-eight million dollars with this tax, these are the roads that are gonna get these treatments. Or these are the projects that are gonna get done, or whatever that, whatever that CIP looks like. Then uh, the public, when they go to the, when they go to the polls, they can look at it and say, alright, well, this is what's gonna happen. And they know exactly what they're voting for. So anyway, that's my spiel on that. That's all I've got. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Commissioner Cannard? Did you have anything else?
I already talked about uh, my library policy. That uh, you will have, all of you will have very shortly.
Thank you. Looking forward to reading it. Commissioner Barrick?
Couple of short things. Um, number one, I really feel that we do need to do a yearly review for our county administrator. It is overdue, and I think that we should discuss when we should do it, what it should entail, and get it out and get it started and get it done. So the beginning of January, we take and get it done. Number two, when it comes to the roads, I had come up with what I thought was a good definition for residential roads. And I wanted you to at least hear what I was, what I was thinking, because I watched the, my, the German thing, and I read the thing. And they were counting every type of road. And I don't think that's what I've been hearing from the citizens. So they talked about all different types. The different classifications they gave were local, principal and minor arterials, major and minor collectors, and sometimes they call them connector roads, okay? And what I'm hearing, the people's telling me is, the residents' roads should not be major collector roads, minor collector roads, which are defined by the state or our county codes. You know, that, we have our county codes. These roads are roads that are eligible for SCOP money. So they shouldn't be part of what we're hopefully gonna get the residents to agree to for a one cent sales tax. They already have a funding source. Okay? So a good definition would be local roads only in residential areas, which cannot be designated as principal or minor arterials, a major or minor collector. And that's what I feel we should be, you know, when we, when we try to come back with whatever we get from this committee. And they come back and say, if it does say resident, you know, wants the roads done, if that's the one that people want, then we need to actually define what we want as a residential road. Because the narrower we set it up for our residents, the better chance we have of getting it to pass. Because if you say roads, all of a sudden now you got street signs, you got four ninety-one, you got Cardinal. The person living on Wayne Drive in Beverly Hills is not gonna wanna hear that. They want their residential road done. And when I hear people say that, well, they live on a private road and we've got MSTU and that's not gonna affect them. If they left their private road, wouldn't they be on county roads? And somebody has to maintain county roads. So when I hear MSTU, I really don't appreciate those terms because, you know, not everybody pays into an MSTU. But everybody that lives in Citrus County or works in Citrus County uses, whether it's main arterials, minor arterials, collector connectors, whatever, they use county roads. So that's one thing I wanted to say. And the last thing I wanted to say was, happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner. On behalf of the Veterans Advisory Board, I want to point out once again the great work that our staff's doing with our veterans in Citrus County. In July and August, they helped seven hundred and eighty-one veterans and their families and did six outreach events in the community. In the months of September and October, they helped eight hundred and sixty-seven veterans and families, and they served eight outreach events in the community. So we have a very dedicated staff to our veterans here. We are a veteran proud community. And um, I know we're all grateful for our veterans and our staff that works to help them. Um, Madam Attorney?
The only thing I would say, and I haven't mentioned this before, but it came to mind today. A lot of times the documents that are uh, given to us before the meetings have pre-printed the chairman's name. So just be advised that uh, as we get documents that may still have Commissioner Baze as chair, we're just going to line through those and print, and print in Commissioner Finnegan. I, I don't know why I haven't said that in the past, but I just want to make sure it's on the record that we'll be doing that.
Thank you. Last chance for open to the public. We don't quite have the number thing worked out for the second one, do we? Because you can use the same green card. You want that?
Yes, please.
Well, I'm Joe from Beverly Hill, but that one didn't have a number. It was leftover.
Okay.
So I'm gonna be all uh, supportive uh, here this time. The young lady that came up about the budget, that was completely wrong. We just went back and we're pulling these budgets down, and I've, I've got enough experience with this now that I know to save a copy. And then I see it change. So if, if you would go online, and, and I don't mean to be argumentative, I'm saying this now to be supportive. Don't take me wrong. I'm, I'm trying to get down to it, to understand it. But if you look at the current, just go online right now, Google Citrus County Budget twenty-five, twenty-six. Click on it. And you'll notice that it starts on page one oh five. The last time I stood at this microphone, it started on page one. Now, what was missing in the hundred pages that have been deleted is, you open the budget with a nice map and photographs of each of you, and you have an O R chart, and you have uh, an orbital elevation. Here is the strategy that we are pursuing now. And then you have, you go, you go down into it. What I've got on my phone now, I'm looking at the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Every year before, you had that. Okay? Cause you, you, you guys well know from the research and the emails, I'm going back and line by line and all that stuff. It was always there. And so like, for instance, you, you, you have a thing called a budget summary. Well, in the budget summary, the transportation column has expanded greatly. It includes fees, it includes everything. You can see all the line items coming in from all the sales taxes in there. And for instance, when I stood at this microphone last, the transportation budget on the very bottom, bottom was forty-four mil. And if you subtract it off the carry forward, it was like thirty-three. And then, you know, you can see that some of that goes into the one oh two transportation, but some of it goes other places. All of that is gone. And so just, I would add as my proof point that just, just go on Citrus County, download, just look right now on your phone. It starts on page one oh five. I'm done, you know, and, and so what, the reason we need that information is because that's where the sixteen-two was. That's up in the preamble, it's in overview. And, and don't take me wrong, I'm saying this positively, but that's kind of up in the fluff. That's where the sixteen-two was. When you dive down into the one oh two transportation budget, I just have a printer under my chair back there, you know. I did kind of figure this would be coming up, so I brought y'all all copies of the budget. If you go down into the budget that was there two weeks ago when I stood at this microphone, down on Transportation one oh two, you see that. But up on the summary level, it's not, it, you know, it's, it's different numbers.
Thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Hicks.
Yep.
The turtle that runs my computer's not gonna get me there before this meeting ends, so.
It's, it's good. I'm not saying it negatively. I'm, I'm just trying to point to.
Thank you, sir. Well, we'll take a look at it, and Mr. Howard, if you could take a.
I would love to bring you in and let's talk. So with staff and we'll bring everything. Yeah, absolutely.
Fifteen minutes?
Absolutely, yes. We'd, we'd love to do it, yes.
Curtis Bryant-Lacanto, um, as you guys are revisiting that budget option, again, I downloaded it too, um, it's not, it's no longer searchable. So it's, what they did was, when they exported the PDF out, they exported it as images, not as text. So if you type in the word roads in the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget, that, the word roads appeared nineteen times. You can't do that now with the current budget option. Um, there's no search, searchability. So people who aren't familiar with that, and they're trying to figure out like what numbers they are, like one oh two or whatever it is, they can't find that by searching anymore. So I think it's just a, it's a tech issue with the export out of the PDF. Talking about roads, uh, or the videos that you guys were talking about, um, the media staff did a great job on those YouTube videos. One suggestion I might make with that is that you guys incorporate the road work with some of that. I know that there's a lot of distrust, you know, the people aren't familiar where the gas tax goes, or where, you know, all these other funds for roads go. Maybe as roads are completed, you guys do a picture of it, be like, hey, this is, you know, this was three million dollars of gas tax revenue or SCOP funds or whatever it is. And you start posting those videos or pictures of those roads being done, so people in the community can see, hey, this is where the tax money is going. And they're doing like a whole presentation about roads and keeping people updated about different things. Going to the, I heard one of the commissioners say something about growth and development. We can't stop it, it comes before the board. Um, we have to kind of keep going things. Just to remind you guys, everything that comes to this board for a hearing for uh, something, it comes to you for a reason. And the reason is that they're changing something with the terms of the original development agreements or what, what have you. So you guys are able to deny every single one of those projects. Um, there's no reason that you would have to rubber stamp every single thing. And you guys do deny some things. Obviously, you guys did the RV park um, last week or two weeks ago, whatever it was. But you are able to um, have say in those, in those projects. Um, and one other thing I wanted to bring up, um, Wednesday, I think it was, you guys did a groundbreaking for the business park for Immerness. You guys announced the helicopter port is coming to Immerness. And great, you know, I, I agree that that's probably a good thing for Citrus County, um, for the Immerness Airport, all of that. My question was with that, when was that decided? I've never seen this board discuss a, you know, twenty twenty-three, maybe you guys mentioned possibly a heliport. I don't remember a vote on a heliport. I don't remember lease terms, you know, is she leasing the land? Is she buying the land? What, you know, what does that look like? It is a publicly owned airport. There has been no discussion of what that plan looks like, what's the business plan. I know you guys hammered Wright Rudder Aviation. Yeah, where's their business plan? Where's their business plan? What's the business plan for the heliport? Who's running it? Who's operating, things like that? So when you guys are doing projects like that, same thing with four ninety-one, um, great idea, but bring those things to the board, have the discussion in public. And then let everyone else kind of see what's going on for the transparency aspect of those things. Um, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
It gets confusing again without numbers at this side. It worked so well in the beginning.
I'll, I'll try to fix that, uh, by.
It was all great.
Thank you for your grace. It's my first.
Absolutely. Congratulations, by the way. When I stood up here before, I, I'm sorry, Deb Spence, Crystal River. And when I stood up here before, I talked about a previous commissioner, uh, Ron Kitchen. And I'm going back to it, a report that was done at one of the first times that I heard about him. And it was about the New York Times coming into the library. And Ron was adamant that that was not gonna happen. And the quote that he had is, we're not banning anything. This goes back to the New York Times. If you want to see a media divide a community, because that's what we're all about today. If you want to control a population, divide them. If you want to control a population, divide them. Divide them and scare them. And that's what we're dealing with today. And that was as true five years ago as it is today. There are scare taxes of who's in, who's out. It starts at the library board, it comes up here, it goes back to the library board, and we're just back and forth all the time with issues that divide us and not the issues that bring us together. Commissioner Baze, thank you for your comments today about our education and what we need to do to improve some of that through the library system. As a library volunteer, I can tell you that there's more volunteers that are needed. And it's a matter of getting the kids in because the parents don't believe in the education system. They want to have parental rights without parental obligations. So thank you for mentioning that. That was one of the first things you said when you came on the board, and I appreciate you referring back to that today. Mr. Howard, in focus, there was a study done with the West Citrus Elks Ladies Sewing Group. And the work that they're doing, they did five quilts of valla for Purple Hearts this year. That was shared through the Facebook pages and the internet pages, not only locally, but nationally, to see how county works and how these videos have an impact on everyone. So thank you very much for honoring those ladies. They do a great work. Road repair. It would give a lot to get people online with road repairs if people knew what roads we were talking about. It goes back in this ethereal point of major roads and minor roads and county roads and da-da-da. Put names to them. Start to do a spreadsheet of what all the roads are, what category they come onto, and what chance do they have of ever being filled or being repaired. That's what the people want to see. That's the transparency that this board needs to come out to people. And if you can do that, and you say, oh, my road needs to be repaired, I'm going to vote for it. If I think my road needs to be repaired and it's not on the list, well, they get a chance to ask why. Because these two roads seem to be the same, but they're listed categorically differently. So that's the way to get this vote passed, is to let people know specifically what does this road tax do and whose roads are being repaired. Thank you.
Next speaker?
I just wanted to share one thing I've never commented on before, but I noticed that our county, to my knowledge, since I've been here anyway, I've never heard of us having a Founder's Day celebration. So I would really like to inspire, I tried contacting the Heritage Committee and so forth, but I've not had any response back. But I think it's important to remember where our county came from, how it's developed, how it's changed. And I just really would like to, the thought of having a Founder's Day celebration, I believe it was founded in June 2 of 1887, if I remember correctly reading. I just think that's something to celebrate. We do have a wonderful county. It'd be nice to share our kids, its heritage, how it started, and, you know, how it began. And I think that's important. The other thing is, I know it's probably falling on deaf ears again, and y'all don't like hearing it, but again, I didn't hear any comment on the possibility of an evening meeting. I really think it's important, a lot of people honestly cannot afford to take time off to come in for these meetings. Y'all are blessed, you get paid to be here, but the taxpayers don't get paid to be here. And it's really difficult for them to take time off from work to try to come and share on their opinions and so forth. Another thing, I know you do it live, so is there a way that people can respond through the internet, you know, when you're having your sessions, like when you have open floor? Is there a way that, I can't remember what you call it, when you have a, but anyway, where they can respond through the internet while we're having meetings, you know? So for some reason, if you never decide to have an evening meeting, let's at least have it where they can respond through the internet when you're having your live meetings, like an open floor, have a time where they can type through the, you know, computer systems or whatever. I just really think it's important to let other community members have a say. So thank you. Y'all have a blessed and safe Thanksgiving, and see you next time.
Thank you. Anybody else open to the public? Last call? All right, I'll close open to the public. And, you know, when you came up here, I was like, I was going to address that, and I totally forgot. But first, do we have any contact information we can give her for the Heritage Advisory Board?
We can, yes, we can follow up.
Or a historic, I know we have a historical board.
Yeah.
What is it called officially?
Historical Resources Advisory Board.
Yes.
I've emailed two people, or two things like that. It's been. It used to be Mark Hammer. I don't know if he's still filling in with that.
We can try to track someone down.
We can try to help you with that. I'm just going to. Real quick, okay, Eric Head is in the back, he's going to wave, he's going to help you with that. Thank you, Eric. I do want to say something about the evening meeting, and I meant to say that before. You know, people, I think, get online, or they come up here and they say it, and it's not that it hasn't been tried before, but I'm going to say two things about that, well, maybe three. First, I wouldn't mind trying it again. But here's the problem, it was tried and it failed. The other thing is, normally, not today, we have our 501s, right, our land hearings. That is growth and development. And every time people are screaming about it, oh, all these things get approved, they do it during the day, they don't do in the evening. 100% of the votes that we take on that are in the evening, after 5 o'clock, no exceptions. And guess what? All these people screaming about it, they're not showing up. They don't come. They're advertised, and you know that, because you come, Tracy. Well, when it involves their community, if it's in a Pine Ridge, or it's in a Meadow Crest, or it's affecting one section, those people may come out. We were just here, people from Denellen just came out last time, all after 5. The general public that's saying, why don't they do this after 5? They make it sound like we're doing it during the day, and that absolutely is not true. So I don't know what to do with that. People are saying one thing, but they're not doing it. And then, you know, during the day, it's other people, like it's too late at night, the meetings are too long, because I'm sure some of you have been here, staff has, we may have workshops in the morning, we start a meeting at 1 o'clock. I've been here till about 11 o'clock at night, because all that development is happening in the evening. So, you know, we'll see what the board wants to do, but I do want to put that out publicly. If people are really saying, we're concerned and we want them in the evenings, a good start would be start showing up at the evening portions of the meetings. And if we really get some traction, maybe we'll have to then look for all parts of the meeting. And then, of course, we couldn't do it all that we do in one evening, because we'd be here at 5 o'clock, you know, 5 o'clock in the evening to 5 o'clock in the morning. So we'd have to break that up in days. So let's see. You know, Tracy, if people start coming at 5 for all of these after 5 development hearings, I think that's something the board could take a look at.
Madam Chair, I have one other, that's all fine points. One other point is, if you look around in this room right now, the majority by a small margin is now staff. And so staff is typically out there multitasking, they're doing their work while they're waiting in the audience in case they're needed to come up and explain things and to track things. So if we push all of this to the evening, then, you know, do they have a delayed start to their day? That's really not very practical because of the machinery of keeping accounting running. So it ends up being, I would assume, probably a little bit more expensive to run a meeting that way because of staff time as well. Just one small point. But the chair is right, we have tried it, and it's, no one showed up. It was, and we talked about it a lot. So I wanted to make one other comment to circle back to, this community is so, back to Deb Spence's point about talking about what brings us together. This community, the reason, I always said this when I first ran for office, is that this community was worth it. Because we put our heart and soul into supporting the things that matter, to launching a YMCA with zero, a state-of-the-art one with zero debt, that kind of thing. And my greatest fear, because I grew up here, my greatest fear as we grow is that we're going to lose that small-town charm. Hey, we got a target now. We're hitting the big time. Right? And that's why I say over and over and over, shop local. You know, yes, we all go to the big box stores. Yes, we all shop on Amazon. But shop local, go to the little ones. And the reason I'm bringing this up is the, George Rousah would be a brilliant person to name a highway after. Let's celebrate our hometown heroes. You know, the ones that really made a difference. You know, we, everybody likes to hate on developers and builders, but as Commissioner Kennard said, George Rousah was a highly successful builder who spent his golden years not traveling the world, spending his money with Bridget. He spent it building Habitat for Humanity homes. You know, that's a local hero. We need to celebrate our locality, because that's, there is no other county in the world that has a George Rousah. They probably, they have a George Rousah, it's just not named George Rousah, but you get the point, right? So I love that whole track, you know, is to just really lean into what makes us special and different from anywhere else. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Baze?
Someone brought up earlier today about housing and apartments and duplexes and new And I just wanted to touch on it for a moment. Talking to people that build high rises, I went out to the Fountains, I believe it's called, the senior living housing development that was, just recently did the groundbreaking in Crystal River. And that was one of the programs where they subsidize it through the tax credits. And I was asking the developers that day about what the cost was, because many of the developers that I've talked to about building apartments in this community, what they tell me is, it costs about anywhere from $190,000 to $250,000 per door for apartments. And that the performa just doesn't work in Citrus County at this point. So when I talked to the developers for the senior housing complex, they told me it was about $300,000 a door. So when we talk about that, and then when I look around at the inventory in our county and kind of that affordability range, one of, we do need new housing at that affordable level. And the reason why is, if you take an older house, and I'll use the Beverly Hills area, people are not qualifying. By the time they go in and they have to get their interest rate and the insurance on it, it's much more expensive. Because if they go in and buy a new house from a developer, that developer is going to buy that interest rate down. So it makes it much more affordable, and the insurance is going to be a whole lot more affordable for that new development if we can get those in here. And I think what you'll start to see is, you will see, it's a supply and demand issue that, the way I see it, as it currently sits. And I don't want to belabor the point. I mean, you can go on, there's a lot of preemption that's going on at the state level as far as development goes. There's even a bill out right now that they're talking about, if we had an old development of regional impact setting out there in a PUD, they're looking at adding on to that to say, because right now, we put limits on how long they can be out there. If those have limits on them, if there's a hurricane within 80 miles, they can literally automatically up that. They can just come in and set it out. So there's a lot, there's a lot of legislation going on that local governments are having to comply with. So I wanted to bring that up. And I'm just going to say it, there's not, your air conditioning business, your car mechanic business, a tree farm that I have, a landscape nursery, it's for the wholesale. There's nobody, I find it insulting for people to say that we're in bed with developers, or we're on the take, or we're crooks. That's just simply not true. And if you think it is, I'm sorry for that. Everybody, you should be proud that you have people that are in business, trying to make a living, that employ people, adding to the economy. I can tell you, when I go to fundraisers, it's about the same 200 group of people that show up that support the very worthy and needy in this community. And I'm proud to do that. And if making profits on a business infuriates you, I'm sorry. But that's what capitalism is about. That's what America is about. So I'm never going to apologize for it. My family has been in business most of their lives, and we've continued to be in business. I no longer own my insurance business, I sold that prior to coming here. But yeah, I have a son that is a retired medical vet, and he runs that business every day, and he does a darn good job of it. And I'm not ever going to apologize for it. And I don't think any of my fellow board members should apologize for being in business.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Reese.
Q1, this is announcement, the Special Library District Advisory Board announced expiration of terms. Announced the expiration of terms for five regular membership positions and accepting up applications for the Special Library District Advisory Board. The new two-year terms will begin on February 1, 2026, and will expire on January 31, 2028. Q2 Code Review and Appeals Board, CRAB, announced member vacancies, announced the vacancy of one regular and two alternate vacancies on the Code Review and Appeals Board.
Thank you, Reese. Okay, well, I want to just thank this board again for their vote, and for bearing with me as we just have made some minor changes to, you know, try new things to make the meetings efficient. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.